Good evening, everyone. We're going to try to get ourselves ready to start here. Thank you. And welcome to -- this is September 24th, 2019, meeting for the Board of School Commissioners. May I have a motion, please, to reopen the meeting?
So moved.
By Commissioner McFadden, seconded by Commissioner, yes, uh-huh, Berkeley. All those in favor? Lynn, Frank, Bondima, Richardson, Chinna, McFadden, Brooks, Berkeley. And we have two absent, is that correct? At this time, I'm going to ask if you can stand as you're able as we have the presentation We'd like to recognize the members of the JROTC from New Era Academy. We had Cadet Dinesh, I'm sorry, Dancia Hill, Cadet Abdon Lopez, Cadet Lasante Perry, Cadet Stephanie Lovo, and Cadet Nathan Parker. Thank you again. Thank you, that's great, yes. Going to ask Commissioner Frank if he would lead us in the moment of silence.
Thank you. I would like to take this time to recognize the passing of city school employees. It is with great sadness we announce the passing of Aaron Cuthrell, who most recently served the Dorothy I Heights Elementary School, Number 61 Community. During Mr. Cuthrell's time at Dorothy I Heights Elementary School, he served as a fourth-grade teacher, member of the school's leadership team, and a math building representative. The students and staff of Number 61 will greatly miss Mr. Cuthrell's smile and ability to give everyone a laugh when they really needed one. During Mr. Cuthrell's illness, he kept positive outlook and always said, quote, "I'm going to get better so I can get back to school with my students." He was always about, quote, "his children." Unfortunately, on July 26, 2019, Mr. Cuthrell departed his earthly body but left his legacy of love for the children with us to cherish forever. It is with deep regret we inform you of the passing of Wayne Brooks, who served in city schools for almost 17 years. Mr. Brooks began his career with city schools as a custodial worker one, assigned to the Northwest Cluster in February 2003. During his time with city schools, Mr. Brooks also provided support at Western High School, where he served from 2008 until his passing. Mr. Brooks unfortunately departed on Monday, August 2, 2019, and will be missed greatly by his family, friends, and the city schools community. Sarah E. Gray, who rose from teaching science to become coordinator of guidance for Baltimore City Public Schools, passed away September 6. She earned her bachelor's degree in 1955 from Morgan State College and began her career in educating, in education, teaching science at Garrison Junior High School. Shortly after Garrison Junior High School, Mrs. Gray became a guidance counselor at Gwynne Falls Park Junior High School. Then she went on to Western as a guidance counselor in 1968. She was the first African-American counselor at Western High School. Mrs. Gray eventually would become a guidance staff specialist in 1970. Mrs. Gray received several awards throughout her career for outstanding work in the field of guidance counseling. She was also a member of several boards and committees which allowed her to continue helping city schools' children. Mrs. Gray retired in 1992. She will be greatly missed by her family, friends, and the school community. Please take this moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to receive a motion for the approval of the prior open session minutes. Commissioner Berkeley, is there a second? Commissioner Richardson, all those in favor, please? Frank?
Frank.
Bondima, Richardson.
Chinna.
Bad, Brooks.
Okay, and we have two absent. No, one absent, one abstained, sorry about that. And then a motion for the approval of the closed session summaries. By Commissioner Bondima, seconded by Commissioner Reed, all those favor?
Frank.
Bondima, Richardson.
Chinna.
Bad, Brooks.
Okay. Got a vote up, sorry about that. Okay, we have one absent, one abstained, I'm sorry. Commissioner Lynn, I forgot to let you know that you could have voted the first time around for the, for the, for the open session ones, okay? We'll, we'll get that one straight. I have a distinct pleasure and honor of recognizing some of the employees from city schools who retired with over 30 years of experience. And I'm, as we've been trying to do, would like to recognize those folks. Hopefully, these folks are with us this evening. The first one is, and I'm going to ask as I read about you, if you would step forward, and we'd like to, we're going to present you with a certificate and do our pictures. How's that? Vanessa Lewis began teaching in Baltimore City Public Schools on October 28, 1985. She most recently served as manager one in cafeteria one for John Eager Howard Elementary School. Vanessa Lewis faithfully served the children of the Baltimore City Public Schools for 33.83 years. And she's not here, but let's give her a round of applause. She's off enjoying her retirement, not worrying about the cafeteria, I'm sure, right? Betty McEchan began teaching with Baltimore City Public Schools on March 1, 1976. And I know her well and her son. She most recently served as assistant principal for Mount Royal Elementary Middle School. She has been a great role model, and if you, I was alluding to knowing her, but she has someone special who is a great coach in working with youth in Baltimore, so that's what I meant when I said that. And Michelle Young began working with Baltimore City Public Schools on March 7, 1979. She most recently served as elementary teacher at the Marie G. Faring Elementary Middle School. Ms. Young faithfully served our children for 40.48 years. The board is saying that you, you look about as old as the number of years you've served, so that, that's wonderful. The service has made you young. The certificates are saying, are indicating the number of years that each of these persons served and retiring from duties so long performed with integrity and satisfaction. Now therefore, the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners and the Chief Executive Officer do hereby publicly acknowledge our gratitude for the excellent services rendered and extends our best wishes for all future endeavors. So congratulations to all three, and thank you on behalf of all of the citizens of Baltimore for the work that you did. And I would also like to acknowledge some gifts to our school system. First, I want to acknowledge a gift of $16,500 worth of school supplies from the Bank of America to city schools, including the following locations: the newcomer welcome center, Sandtown Winchester Achievement Academy, Gwynne's Falls, Dr. Bernard Harris, and Armstead Gardens Schools. I'd like to acknowledge a gift of $33,228 worth of furniture items, including chairs, cabinets, and shelves, to city schools from green donations. And finally, I'd like to acknowledge a gift of $320 from the estate of William Edward Baker to benefit city schools. Okay, at this time, I'd like to, if I could have a motion to approve the personnel, the PEP, and the quasi judicial matters. It's moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Berkeley. All those in favor?
Frank.
Bondi.
Richardson.
Chinna.
Bad, Brooks.
Okay, and one absent, one abstention? Commissioner Lynn didn't? Okay, one absent, thank you. I'm going to get this soon. Sorry about that. I think with that, I turn it over to the CEO.
Thank you, Commissioner Chinna. Good evening, everyone. As we move into the new school year, I think it's appropriate to remind everyone of the progress that we have made in implementing our blueprint for success. I want to send thanks to our communications team. We can hear from our students, teachers, literacy coaches, school leaders, district staff, to get their perspective on what we have achieved to date and our goals for the future. And I'm going to ask to play this video from our communications team.
I'm proud to be from Baltimore, and I'm proud of my school. My best teachers are the ones who get me excited about learning and help me discover all the things that I can do.
Here at Baltimore City Public Schools, we're committed to building a generation of young people who are ready to succeed in college, careers, and the community. Helping our students develop the skills, knowledge, and understanding they need to thrive is our top priority.
With the help from students, families, and staff in the community, we created the blueprint for success. It's the district's plan to make sure every child feels safe, supported, and challenged so they can reach their full potential. The blueprint has three pillars: nurturing all aspects of student learning and healthy development, including the emotional and physical, improving literacy and fostering leadership among both adults and students.
We need to ignite our students' curiosity. Help them not just read, but write, speak, and think, because these are the skills they'll need throughout their lives. To do this, we will support teachers and leaders so that they can grow as educators and better serve our students.
This work is already happening in literacy-intensive learning sites. Forty schools in the district, including mine, are trying our best practices to improve our students' literacy skills. We'll share what works well in our schools with the rest of the district. By doing this, we can spread the strategies that work best.
All of these schools have literacy coaches like me. We work closely with teachers to help them bring the best practices into their classrooms.
But it's not just about the academics. We know that our students are passionate, have unique interests and skills, and yet they are faced with real challenges. We are looking at what our students need to be excited about learning and are fully equipped every day. To keep them inspired, we give our students opportunities to do what they love and connect them to people who can help them during rough times. That's what we're all about: meeting our students where they are and supporting them each step of the way.
At all levels and across all positions, each of us has a role to play in the blueprint. Part of our role is to make sure that we are continually growing as people, educators, and leaders. Our teachers work together to analyze data, share what works, and improve lessons. Our principals give teachers feedback to improve their instruction. Our instructional leadership teams create a school-wide culture of learning and collaboration, and district staff, like me, are participating in programs that challenge us to examine our racial consciousness. We must understand how factors like race impact our policies and decisions to make sure that all of our students have what they need to succeed.
Living in Baltimore and going to Merville every day gives me hope for my future. I feel supported by my teachers. I appreciate the opportunity to speak out and be heard. The blueprint for success helps me to see, and because of it, the sky's the limit. So thank you for being a part of the change we need. We won't say it for granted.
It's our responsibility to give our young people the skills, experiences, and relationships that empower them to learn and succeed. With the Blueprint for Success, coaches, principals, teachers, and other professionals, we are working together. We are helping students reach their goals this year and in the future, from pre-K to sixth grade to high school graduation. So let's keep building!
Great, so I just want to thank the young people who are part of our student media team, who continue to lead in terms of their ability to give incredible interviews. Matter of fact, I see some of them more often than I see some members of the larger citywide press, because they're always there, as well as the adults that work with them, but they continue to do a fabulous job. So many thanks to them for putting that together. Last Monday evening, we celebrated our annual, what is becoming our annual, citywide back-to-school night, and I really am pleased to announce that this year, we had by far the largest attendance. Last year, we had nearly 2,000 families, young people. Attend this year, we had just about 2,500 families and students from across the city attend our back-to-school night at the Maryland Science Center. What was wonderful was really to see families and students really engage, not just in the learning of the Maryland Science Center, which is a fabulous locale to be able to host something like that, but also to see the many staff members from city schools who made that night possible. Over and over again, as I walked around the venue when I was outside, taking pictures with families and young people, what was clear was that it was a way that they felt connected as a community and to schools. Matter of fact, I had a couple people say, "So do we do this every month?" And I was like, "Well, not yet. Not quite like this." But it really, really was a great success. And so I do want to also thank our partners who continue to support us in endeavors like these. So I want to thank Enoch Pratt, Free Library, BG&E, Fearless Technologies, Reginald, the Reginald F. Lewis Museum, the Baltimore Office of Promotion in Arts, Media Rhythm Institute, Baltimore City Recreation and Parks, 92Q, Year Up, Lakeshore Learning, Scholastic, Baltimore City Health Department, and Vision Baltimore. So families were coming out. I met one dad who was coming out literally with an armload of books, and he said, "And we're going to read them all," as he came out. There were young people getting information on glasses, and just so many different partners in the work. I got a chance, if you don't, at our next gathering, make sure you do. I think it's called, is it silent yoga? Was it silent yoga that I was doing? I don't see anybody from this. So I highly recommend silent yoga, because it was, so, which is, you put on earphones, and I actually think it was maybe our fearless technology partners who might have come in with, I can't remember exactly who, but you come in with earphones, and they're hooked up to the leader of the yoga, and you're mic'd up, and so literally, you have music playing in the background in your earphones, and you hear this calming voice of the leader of the yoga. And some of our schools that have wellness, that are wellness-intensive learning sites have started implementing this, and I got to tell you, I wanted to make, like, mandatory noon every day at, at North Avenue, mandatory silent yoga. So I recommend, highly recommend silent yoga for everybody. It really was, it was fun. Most of all, I really do want to thank Chief Tina "Hike" Hubbard and her working staff, her hard-working staff in communications and community engagement, who really put in many hours of planning and execution to really make our best back-to-school night event so worthwhile and such an entertaining experience for families. So I am going to take the time to thank Jessica Lawrence, Tenay Thrower, Monique Sims, Demetria Singleton, Shayna MacIver, Rashad Staton, Donell Hurd, Christopher Nighting, Brooke Haycock, Christina Ross, Katia Stokes, Eric Banzac, John McLendon, John Gross, and Martez Henderson. So I want to thank you, everybody, and thank you families for coming out that night. And then finally, I am very excited to announce that the ESOL office has partnered, our English as Second Language Learner Office has partnered with enrollment, choice, and transfers to develop and introduce the Multilingual Enrollment and Support Center. This office will oversee the enrollment of multilingual families and transfer of English learners while also supporting the choice process for English learners. So one of the things we heard back in a lot of our communication with families over the last few years was that for a lot of our ESOL families, the, the enrollment and transfer process was doubly challenging, and so I just want to give kudos to Laura O'Hanian and the ESOL office for working with our team in enrollment, choice, and transfers to really develop this new, this new office. The office is located in Room 320 here at the district office, and it just represents another positive step to make sure that our multilingual families and communities know that we support them, and we want to work, continue to work to promote their success and their children's success. So that concludes my remarks for this evening, and I will turn it back over to Chair Chinna.
I believe we have a PEP, right?
Okay. I'm going to invite Chief Grant Skinner, thank you, Commissioner Chinna, to, for tonight's
Good evening, Dr. Santa Lisa, and Commissioners. We do have one appointment, and I hope she can stand and be recognized. Corinne Deliberto, currently Executive Director at Community Law in Action, is appointed Special Assistant in the Communications and Community Engagement Office effective September 30.
Woo! Okay. Congratulations. Okay, we will, we have an information and discussion item, and the first one this evening is on school police report card survey for school year 1819.
Good evening, School Board Commissioners, Dr. Santa Lisa, staff, and members of the public. My name is Teresa Jones, and I served the district as the Chief Achievement and Accountability Officer. This evening, we're going to share some information with you regarding the most recent administration of the school police report card survey. One of the things that we're going to do a little differently this year is while we're going to have staff share some of the results and, and share with you some of the insights we've gleaned and how that impacts our work, we will also provide an opportunity for one of our leading youth organizations to also share with you their thoughts and reflections as we have collaborated with them, not only in the design of this survey, but also as we have looked at the implications and how it helps us better understand the nature of the relationships between our school police and students. I'm going to start first by providing just a little bit of background and reviewing the purpose, and then I'm going to ask members of our team to start walking through the results. First and foremost, just to give you some background again, the school police report card survey was designed to inform our understanding around how relationships between students and school police are actually being experienced in our schools. So it gives us really good useful insight about conditions of climate and culture, and it's been really interesting over the last few years to just unpack what that tells us about ways that we can strengthen those relationships, as well as ways that we can leverage our professional development to make sure that our school police are meeting the needs of our students. As I referenced earlier, this is a survey that we did not just create in-house, but it is one that we collaborated with youth organizations to develop, and it actually started with the youth organizations coming to us with a starting point for a report card survey. So it has evolved, and you'll hear a little bit more about that, particularly since it is now incorporated as a compliance reporting requirement for our school police policy. As it relates to the organizations, the one that you will hear from this evening is Youth as Resources, but I also want to acknowledge that Baltimore Algebra Project, as well as members of a variety of other organizations, have also been involved in the process, and we're very appreciative of their contributions to the survey as it stands. In terms of the importance, no surprise, student voice is important to us as a district, and being able to gain perspective from students about their experiences with school police are equally important. And in this case, what we're going to share with you in our report card results is the data that we've gathered by looking at those schools that have assigned police officers and learning more about how we can strengthen those relationships. Also, as noted, just the fact that these results can be a catalyst for change. We learn by listening, and as we take a look at the survey results, we continue to unpack the data, and Chief Hamm and his, and his team have continued to factor those learning into their training and professional development, as well as the best practices that they have continued to implement across our schools. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Tanya Webb to tell you a little bit about the administration, what was new this year, and then we'll get into the results.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Chief Jones. We're going to talk about what's new this year. Some things were tweaked this year. Previously, we included fifth through 12 graders who were at schools where there were actually an assigned school police officer. This year, the focus was on middle school and high school students only, so the sixth, fifth graders, excuse me, were not included in the survey results. Also, we had, throughout our discussions with the various youth groups, we decided to rephrase some of the questions. One question that we had asked previously, "My school police use force when dealing with conflict," that question was tweaked, and it was worded, "In which of the following ways have you seen school police resolve, school, resolve conflict in your school in the last year?" And the students were given several options: physical separation, mace, batons, discussion, and conversation, and they could select all that applied. And we also included information about the formal complaint process. The survey, as it was designed, was a tool to gauge culture and climate. How are students and school police interacting on a daily basis? If students need to file a formal complaint against a police officer, that information is included in the survey, because again, this tool is designed just to gauge culture and climate.
And to clarify, it is not included in the survey. We made sure that this year, we didn't ask open-ended questions that could create confusion and have individuals submit information that might indicate that there is actually an issue to be resolved. So we made clear in the survey administration what those instructions are so that people could actually utilize the formal complaint process so that that information could be shared with the appropriate authorities.
This year, our survey window was shortened. We made a great effort to collaborate with our youth groups, and we also expanded participation to youth groups. So because we wanted to make sure that we were able to produce the best product that we could... So, because we wanted to make sure that we were able to produce the best product that we could, that shortened our survey administration period. So, it took place from June 30th through June 20th, June 20th, excuse me, June 3rd to June 20th. Survey is available online, and it is available in a variety of languages. We're trying to be as inclusive as possible to make sure that we have students who participate whose primary language may not be English. So, we had 37 sites where the survey took place. Again, students only in grades six through 12. And this year, we had a little over 1,600 students who participated. That is down from previous years where we had over 5,000 students participate. And that was due primarily to the shortened survey window. Normally, we start administration in April, and we extend that window all the way out until the end of the school year. Okay, we're gonna get into the results. And what we have done is we grouped the questions according to the focus areas. So, we have questions that talk about approachability, about support and encouragement, about conflict resolution, safety, respect, and school culture and climate. So, for approachability, students were asked, I can approach, approach school police if I need or want to. You'll see the results spread out over three years if the question has been on our survey since the beginning. So, this one has. And as you can see, almost 80% of our students agree that they are able to approach school police if they want or need to. So, under support and encouragement, this is a new question this year. School police understand the challenges that Baltimore youth face. And over 70% of our students feel that school police understand the challenges that Baltimore youth face. Also, under supportive and encouragement, the students were asked, school police listen to my ideas and opinions? And almost 70% of respondents said that yes, school police listen to their opinions and ideas. School police not only listen to my ideas and opinions, but they're also encouraging and supportive. Because it's one thing to listen, but it's an entirely different thing to be actually able to offer support and encouragement. And over 60% of our students said that they feel that school police do offer that support and encouragement. Also, under this area, I have some form of relationship with school police. That, only 35% of our students agree that they have some form of a relationship with school police. Conflict resolution. When my school police get involved with a conflict, they help calm the situation. Almost 70%, over 70% of our students said that yes, when school police are involved with the conflict, they are able to calm the situation down, help diffuse it. What we asked this year, again, is the ways in which students have seen school police resolve conflict within the past school year. Almost 40% of our students said that they saw school police use discussion, conversation, when it comes to resolving a conflict. Next in line was physical separation. And lastly, was the use of a baton.
And just one comment about this information. So, one of the things that we have had a chance to do is to meet with Chief Hamm and share these results. And while we have had discrepancies, discrepancies in cases where we don't think that there are incidents happening where batons or other things may be used, the fact that there are students that are reporting these things is worthy of further consideration, partly because we have had instances in the past where there has been confusion when people are dealing with law enforcement, whether or not they're dealing with Baltimore City Police versus school police versus other entities that are out there. There's also a possibility that we just have to be honest about that there could be experiences that are happening that are not being properly reported. So, we just want to be real clear about the fact that while these numbers are here, we still have work to do to really get behind what's happening here. So, we don't want to misrepresent that this means that everything is great and fine, nor do we want to represent that we have a problem. But what we are saying is that we really need to deepen our understanding around what is really happening in this space. Because there, there is at least indication that if not confusion, there may be inconsistent practices versus the expectations that we have set forth for school police.
Safety. School police are adults I can depend on to help if I'm having safety-related issues. Over 70% of our students said yes, school police are adults they can depend on if they are having safety-related issues. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. School police make me feel safe. Over 60% of our students said that school police make them feel safe. Respect. School police are respectful to students. Over 80% of the respondents agree that school police are respectful to students. Not only are they respectful, but the encounters with school police are respectful. And 80% of our students said yes. Those encounters that they have with our school police are respectful. School culture and climate. Encounters with school, school police do not interrupt learning. Over 70% of respondents said that, agreed with that statement that encounters with school police do not disrupt learning. School police participate in school activities. 50% of students agree that yes, their school police actually participate in their school activities. School culture and climate, again, school police contribute positively to school culture and climate. And over 70% of our students said yes, school police contribute positively to school culture and climate. We did ask two open-ended questions. This is new this year. The question reads, we need school police because. And our students said a variety of things. But the one theme that kept occurring is, is safety. Kids want to feel safe. And they said that either the school, they didn't feel safe at school, or the neighborhood wasn't safe, the city, and just the world in general is not a safe place to be. So, when we asked them the question, we need school police because, they said, the city says so. The location of the school isn't very safe. And some responded, we don't. This is a word cloud we created based upon the students' responses. The words that are the largest are the words that appear most frequently. And you'll notice that it says, protect kids safe. The next question that was asked, we do not need, we would not need school police if. Again, the themes of safety, respect for self, respect for others. Some students talked about, again, the students inside the school weren't treated as criminals. So, if the world actually viewed the students as human beings and something other than humans. Baltimore was a safe city, there were no guns. We didn't have problems and altercations. Again, the word cloud, you'll see students fight. Those were the words that occurred most frequently in the students' responses. So, some of our recommendations going forward for this administration of the School Police Report Card Survey is definitely begin the survey administration process earlier. Our plan is to start meeting earlier with our youth groups, get feedback on any survey revisions. So, we should hopefully have the survey ready to administer April of next year. So, again, that will allow us at least two months. So, we'll be able to capture more responses and also allow for those graduating seniors to participate. Continue youth participation expansion. With the CEO's Youth Leadership Advisory Council, there will be a subcommittee just for the School Police Report Card Survey. And those committee members will consist of students that are actually at schools or sites where there are assigned school police officers. Use youth up next pop-ups to continue discussions. For those students who may or may not be at schools or programs that have permanently assigned school police, they will have the opportunity to give their feedback on their relationships, their interactions with school police. And then, also have our school police commit to relationship building. This should be an ongoing process. Participate, have the school police participate in activities with students, such as Outward Bound. And the students also mentioned they want the relationships that they have with school police to be, to be real, to be organic, and not be fake. Any questions or comments?
Commissioner Rehn?
Can you go back to page, slide, slide 11? I guess my question is, why is that so different than the rest of the slides? And the other is, how do you attack and communicate with the strongly disagree and the disagree students?
Yes. So, I'll, I'll start. So, I will say, this is the question that we still are trying to unpack, what is meant when people see that word, relationship? And so, while this has been one that we have decided to keep in, it has been kept in because each year, you can see, it tends to be a mixed set of results. And some of that, we believe, may be true because there are differing expectations around what a relationship should look like between a student and a school police officer. So, there are some students that have that regular communication that school police offers, that trusted adult that they communicate with on a regular basis. For others, it's more of a casual hello, and they're just looking for what I'll argue is sort of like a top-level, entry-level, respectful type of engagement. And so, some of this gets to the fact that there are students that don't expect to have that deeper level of relationship. And some of those responses, we believe, is what's showing up in the disagree and strongly disagree category. But the fact of the matter is, this is an area that we will continue to probe on. And with the support of the youth organizations, we're getting some insight from some of the conversations that they've had with students that go beyond what we're able to capture in the survey results. So, again, this is one that we have discussed with Chief Hamm about, with, with the youth about. And quite honestly, we can't just put our finger on a common definition around this. This is gonna be one I think we're gonna have to look at, particularly as we think about digging into what the next round of questions are, to say, is there a more precise way that we can get at what those expectations are so that we can get a true read?
Well, if I was a strongly disagree student, how would you communicate with me to let, make me feel better about the whole process?
And unfortunately, that's a question I don't, I don't feel like we would be able to address here. Like, I think, you know, having members of the school police really speak to how they sort of interpret that and how they live out day-to-day those expectations would probably be a better way for us to get a response to your question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bundima.
Thank you. I do have a question, and I appreciate the survey. However, when you said that you only received 1,600 responses, when you compared that with the amount of students that you have that should be taking this survey, it's really, it's really not enough. And in addition to that, it really was too late. Because, you know, I'm not the teacher in the classroom or in the school, but I think we all know that around June 3rd, I think it was June 3rd.
That's correct.
June 3rd is just.
It's late.
Not too much is going on. And students are graduating, students are saying, why should I be here? That's the, not all of them, you know. So, you're not getting a good insight to what the students are really feeling. I, I would, I know it would be a lot of trouble. I would be interested in, in a survey that would occur twice a, a year and would be distributed. And at some point, you could, I know it's a lot of work, but you can run it through the system, computerized, and see exactly what kind of results you would receive. Something that would occur in January or February, whatever you would work out. And then, again, before the students leave to, for graduation prom and because they're getting all excited, before they leave to school. But because we said June 3rd to the 20th. It, there's no school in the, uh, uh, June 20th, whatever.
Yeah. That was the last day of school last year.
Yeah, oh, no, nothing would happen the last day. Not even the teachers probably don't even know where the survey.
No, absolutely.
I'm kidding.
Right. No, your, your point is well-
I wouldn't know where the survey would be. But anyway, the meantime, I would say, the best time would be earlier.
Yeah. No, your, your point is well-taken. And we, we agree with you wholeheartedly that we need a longer survey window. So, having it earlier. I think your question around, should we have a twice-a-year administration is something that we can take back and consider as we work through plans going forward. I will just say to keep in mind, there's a lot of survey activity that happens in schools. And a lot of them are computer-based. And as we start getting into the spring window, it also competes with the technology needs around assessment. So, while we'll certainly take that under advisement, I do just want to just, just give folks some insight around our sensitivities around numbers of surveys, frequency of surveys, so that we can address those needs, especially when they're dependent on technology.
And I would just say one more thing, Commissioner Bundima, which is that, yeah, we did start it later than we had, than we had planned to. So, it did start later. But the other thing, just to keep in mind in terms of the number of people responding to, is that this is only high schools and middle schools where there is an assigned police officer. So, the universe of the number of students is not as large as it is as, you know, the whole district or even all high school students. So, just to keep that in mind with the total available number of students is. But it is not as high as it, it should be. And it's not as high as it's been in prior years when we did do it earlier. So, we do have to get it out earlier.
And the teacher, teachers would know where the survey is located, I know that.
Yeah. I would say also, despite, you know, much smaller response rate, like, the responses we actually saw have been pretty stable across the past three years. So, despite like a major change, we didn't really see any bar, like, in any of these graphs that was way different than the previous years. So, that's somewhat comforting, but completely acknowledge that we would like to see a longer window and get a better response rate.
Just a quick, couple of quick questions. For the, for the options regarding, what is this? I think one of the earlier slides, do they have an option to, for, particularly for none at all? In terms of the, the types of instances where they see, they saw a, a officer using a particular type of force was an option for none at all?
They could select any of those or?
Or not respond. It wasn't a required response item.
Yeah, okay.
So, they should ideally only be responding if in fact they have witnessed any of those items. So, they had the ability to check more than one option, but they were not required to respond to that question.
Okay. And then, how many items are on the survey?
18 to 20. One second. I have the copy of the survey here. Just gonna double-check. Okay. Total response items would have been 20, but those also include questions that get at which grade, which school that they were assigned to, et cetera.
Okay. And then, also thinking about the STEM, how was the STEM chosen to, to get their responses, their qualitative responses?
In terms of the specific question?
Yeah, the STEM, yeah.
Okay. So, for the open-ended responses, the questions were, we need school police because. And then, the second one is, we would not need school police.
Yeah, I said, how would, how were the, the stems chosen? Like, why, why those two stems questions? That's, that's a-
Oh, why those two questions?
Yeah, I mean, so, because that then biases the, the response to that question.
So, the actual, the, the questions were, we came up with in collaboration with the youth groups. So, the actual, the, the questions were, we came up with in collaboration with the youth groups. Um, it, this is the actual, "We need school police, we do not need school police." Um, so, those ones we came up with, the youth groups, um, are, were you asking more like what, the responses we chose to highlight, why we picked those, or?
No, I'm sorry, just trying to get at sort of the context, right? So, if you ask a, a leading question, you're most likely going to get a response to that STEM. So, so essentially, if, for example, you were to just say, uh, something like, oh, well, what are the experiences? Um, uh, what is the context in which, you know, schools could be more productive or better? Um, or something like that related to them, you might get something that's more, much more open-ended versus a STEM response, which is like, oh, the, the kind of the list of really short bullet point, so we don't have a lot of context, but we just, but we have like flair stuff. It's like, oh, well, if the neighborhood was better, or the school was better, but like...
Right, we didn't, we didn't have, we didn't have specific responses for that. Those were completely open-ended questions. So, there were no, so there were no responses that individuals could select. This whole idea in terms of a need for school police has been largely driven by the dialogue around why do we in city schools have school police in our schools? So, there's been sort of this question around, is that something that we absolutely need to have because our circumstances are so different than other jurisdictions? Or is there, is it really something that we don't need at all? And that's sort of been part of the conversation with the youth organizations, is this perception by students that they don't need school police if, in fact, you know, the climate was much better than what it was. But then, on the flip side of that, you have students saying, well, we do feel that we need school police because there are these conditions in our neighborhoods that make their way into the school environment, and in some cases, there are challenges within the school climate itself. So, I think that, that framing around need, if that's what you're really getting at, I think has been driven more so by that dialogue. And those questions were originally proposed by the youth organizations that helped us design the survey.
And, uh, I believe we're, so, are we having a response from the youth organizations? So, I want, I want to give them an opportunity so that we can, um...
Yes.
Move ahead, too. So, um, uh, Youth is Resources?
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Tori Grace.
My name is Deanna Thompson. And we are from Youth is Resources.
Okay, for anybody who doesn't know, Youth is Resources is a grant-making, a youth-led, grant-making, community organizing, and leadership development organization. We give grants, training, and support to youth in Baltimore City to start and carry out projects that address critical community issues and positively impact the city. And I'm going to move on. Um, so, we started doing school police accountability work in about 2014. It evolved from our work in school climate and disability awareness. Uh, we were alarmed by the student arrest statistics, so we, us and BEP worked together to develop the report card. In 2015 summer, we started communicating with our peers to get information and get help developing the school police report card. Um, we now facilitate focus groups to help students prepare for the school police report card and raise awareness. Um, we also get feedback from them still, uh, and try to get information on school police and student relationships. Uh, we talked to about a thousand youth, and as a result of this, we were included in the school police policies and general orders. Uh, okay. Keep going. Our recommendations were endorsed by eleven additional youth-led and youth-serving, and organizations, and also other adult advocates. Um, we also host bimonthly school police roundtables, and we work with Chief Hamm to develop a training curriculum for a school police to do like five hours of youth-led training with the twenty hours they already have.
So, our response to this year's report card, um, which is based on our review and our focus groups with our peers, um, some good news that we have around it is that we have gotten specific feedback for, on positive experience with school police officers, um, school police relationship with school police, school, school police report, students' report relationship with school police to be more positive than the relationship with other, uh, police in the community. We have also been able to identify, um, where school officers are using their best practices. Um, shouts out to Murvo and Renaissance, where, uh, the relationship between the two are by far like on the better hand. Um, students are more understanding of their rights, and they feel some sort of empowerment behind knowing that they have, they get to weigh in on, uh, their relationship with the school police. Uh, Chief Hamm has welcomed our ideas, and we have shared our school, our school police report card focus groups results with him. And he has invited us to do training with him later on in the year with his, uh, also with his school officers. Now, some challenges that we have is that too many students feel as though they don't have any kind of relationship with school police officers. Too many students feel like their relationship with school officers is not as positive as it could be, including the fact that school police officers make smart remarks, are disrespectful, and on a power trip. These are reoccurring comments that we have received, and we still get feedback around excessive force. Um, there's a lot of report about pepper spray, which students feel is unnecessary. And we believe that the school police report card results, good and bad, uh, reflect our conversation with our peers. So, some recommendations that we have is that the district should implement, needs to implement, the school police report card earlier so that more students can take it. Um, we're working on recommenda- recommendations to make the complete form process, um, student frien- student-friendly and easier. Um, more simpler, I mean. Um, we want the question around excessive force added back into the school police report card. And student, I mean, school police should get on the train, get on, get on training, uh, with relationship building with school, with youth outside of the five hours that is required for them to have.
Okay, um, I'm going to take it from here. Uh, all data, including the report card results, arrest statistics, incidents of force, et cetera, should be public and known to students and others. District staff should be included in the youth-led training or youth engagement in building relationships with students, and that's all we have.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, I'm sure that you've given a copy of your recommendations to someone, but could you also, uh, see that you, you shared them with, uh, the board execs so that the, so that the board members can take a look at those also as we follow up?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Frank?
Thank you for that. I have a question. You mentioned that Murvo and Renaissance, you, you gave them a shout-out. Could you just talk a little bit more about what they've done differently that you think deserved that?
Um, so, we gave them the... We gave them the shout-out, um, simply because the relationship between the school police officers and the students are more on a friendly aspect, like, their school police officers talk to them, their school police officers interact with them, uh, are building some type of relationship with their students. Students are able to notify their school, like, know that their school police officer is present, uh, when, when they're around in that case. Um, where at other schools, students don't know exactly where their school police officers are. They don't walk the halls. You only see them probably like once out of the day compared to where you, at Renaissance and Murvo, you probably see them in the morning, you probably greet them, you probably like, you get the feel of knowing that that person is present, which isn't happening at every school.
Thank you again, okay? And I, and I know we also want to thank, uh, Chief Hamm and, and the work that he has been doing in terms of really working with you, uh, to continue in this effort. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'm, I'm just going to be reviewing, uh, the consent agenda, uh, just, uh, prior to our, our, our public comment, and see if there are any items that folks would like to have removed from the consent agenda. So, um... We will be removing, um, items eight point zero one, eight point zero two, zero three, zero four, zero five, zero six, and zero seven. So, they will be removed. Uh, so, eight point zero eight, the capital improvement program. No request. Eight point zero nine, the budget amendment request. Okay. Uh, sorry. Twelve point zero one, uh, in procurement, Burmax Company. Twelve point zero two, After School Programs Incorporated. Fifteen point zero one, Alliance Exterior Construction, Simpson of Maryland. Fifteen point zero two, Third Party Elevator Inspection Services. And I believe, that's it? Okay. The ones being removed are eight point zero one through eight point zero seven. That's what you highlighted.
Those can just go by consent because they're all policy, and Josh will remove by consent. He's removed those two, so he, since he can't vote on those two.
I'm sorry, I did it the backward way?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. I read the, I read the highlighted ones in the, in, uh, that I was supposed to list as the, that could possibly go by consent. So, let me go back again. So, um, eight point zero one. Not hearing anything, so it can go by consent? Okay, eight point zero two. Eight point zero three, procedures, um, the second reader. Eight point zero four. Eight point zero five, Policy JJA, Student Organization, second reader. Eight point zero six, Public Charter Schools, second reader. Eight point zero seven, Policy GCO. Okay? Eight, and we've al- we already did eight point zero eight, eight point zero nine. Okay, so, the, the only item that is pulled is eight point zero seven, Policy GCO. All right? Okay. Okay, so, we're moving into public comment, and our first set of, uh, folks who are invited to speak are, um, the special groups. Um, we have the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee, CCAC, Ms. Sheila Billam, Billups, I'm sorry, Ms. Billups.
Good evening, Board of Commissions, Dr. Santa Lisa, and all this in attendance this afternoon. I say good evening to you. I'm coming to report a wonderful couple of weeks of school starting. I've been to four back-to-school nights, including the one at the Science Center. Um, it was a tremendous blessing to be there. The kids, the students, the parents, as well as the staff members were very excited about this new school year, and, uh, things are moving well. I come to report, uh, good turnout, less transportation problems on this year than it has been in the past years. We have moved forward with, um, getting to schools, getting the children to school and back home. I've been out in the schools, watching them coming in at the bell time, and they're arriving on time, and I, I'm thankful for that. All the work that was done with the Transportation Department to bring this up to date. Also, I want to, um, allow you to know, we having some issues with data concerning around IEP with the parents understanding it. IEP is an individual educational plan for those who understand special education. So, I'm looking for those in this room and all around to support us in helping the parents to understand their part in the educational plan and moving forward with the IEP chairs in order to make that happen. I'm having a wonderful meeting October the fourteenth centered around IEPs. I will continue to do that throughout the year so that parents will have knowledge, as well as the students have knowledge about an IEP. We, we need your support and help in getting the word out, this very important meeting. The meeting is held in this boardroom every second Monday of the month. I have a young lady just come in to talk about an IEP as she went through the process as a student. She's now at Penn State University, so she has a lot of resources and a lot of information to support our students in Baltimore City. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Billups.
Oh, one other thing, I want to thank Dr. Santa Lisa for being the keynote speaker at my son's school, who graduated from George W. F. McMick, and it was a wonderful opportunity to hear her on another level. Thank you.
And congratulations. Okay, next we have the Baltimore Teachers Union, Zach Taylor, along with Jocelyn Providence as representatives.
Good evening, Board, Madam Chair and Madam CEO. My name is Jocelyn Providence. I am the Secretary of the Teacher Chapter of the Baltimore Teachers Union. So, I'm not sure if you all officially removed the vote for tonight, um, but as a union, we still want to be clear on our opinion on this policy. With little to no research being offered, unannounced formal observations continues a long history of experimenting on students and teachers of color. If improving teachers' instructional practice was truly the goal, the district would engage in a shared process to bring teachers on board. The proposed policy has too few feedback and informal observation requirements for principals to ensure teachers that these changes are meant to improve rather than penalize. This policy creates an environment where staff members never get to experience their own productive struggle with implementing new classroom strategies or challenging their own classroom practices for fear of being penalized. Importantly, the district has not addressed its own equity policy that was created this year when considering its evaluation system or these proposed changes, especially when regards to how the system may incentivize teachers to leave challenging schools. The equity policy says that, quote, "The district must take responsibility and action for removing and actively repairing inequities." "The district prioritizes the allocation of resources, including staff, in a manner that ensures historically underserved students and schools get what they need to participate in a world-class education," end quote. However, research has shown that Danielson's base frameworks measure the, measure the demographic characteristics of teachers and the chara- characteristics, excuse me, of students rather than rating the actual performance of teachers. Due to how our evaluation scores influence our salary increases, teachers measured under a biased rubric are heavily incentivized to leave, to leave the lowest-performing schools in search of students who already meet the rubric standards. It is not good enough to meet with teachers after this policy has already been approved. And because of this, I am asking you, as a board, to vote no on this policy as it is. If this policy goes forward without an official collaborative process written into the policy, it will be a lost opportunity to meaningfully rework our evaluation system, to rid it of bias while also providing the supports needed for continual growth and improvement. And it says to teachers in Baltimore City that you do not care about our working environment, the needs of our students, but simply the numbers.
Good evening. My name is Zach Taylor, and I'm a Vice President in the BTU. I want to emphasize that the BTU believes that ineffective teaching is a problem when it occurs in our schools, and there absolutely needs to be a credible program to address it. But we're moving in the wrong direction when we double down on tools that have been consistently shown to have generated classist, gendered, and racially biased measurements of teacher effectiveness. It's crucial to make our evaluation system as good as it can be, and these complex issues have not received the necessary attention to assure fidelity with our district's equity policy nor fairness to our teachers and students. Our position is based on the research we've shared, focused on urban school districts using Danielson-based frameworks like Baltimore's. In these systems, research has repeatedly found that when all other things are held equal, teachers of the same quality are rated less effective when teaching low-performing students and rated more effective when teaching high-performing students. Moreover, teachers are penalized in observations when leading classrooms with higher concentrations of poverty, and studies of Danielson-based frameworks have found that when controlling for assessment-based achievement, men and teachers of color receive significantly lower observation ratings than women and white teachers. In short, Danielson-based observation ratings are highly sensitive to the students in the room and the demographic characteristics of the teachers rather than the actual instructional quality of the teacher. These biases will be exacerbated by unannounced formal observations. We've been surprised that these issues haven't been considered or discussed by the district. Again, this highlights the importance of a collaborative work group to consider to what extent does this evaluation system alter teacher mobility and turnover patterns with a particular focus on persistently low-performing schools. Additionally, the concern we voiced about GCO, RA, and the lack of an evaluation cycle has gone unaddressed. Unlike every other district in the state, Baltimore formally observes all teachers every year, and our school system likely has the lowest qualified observer capacity in the state, yet qualified observers are tasked with observing many more teachers than any other district. This split attention distracts administrators from where they're needed most, in the classrooms of teachers who are either new or have been rated ineffective. Again, this is a system that could and should be addressed as part of a collaborative process between teachers and the district. They need to be considered in a work group to ensure we get the effective and equitable, the most effective and equitable evaluation system possible for our students, educators, and administrators.
Thank you. Five minutes. Any commissioners have? I have one question, and it's an observation also, and I didn't want to, but I'm going to have to ask this one because I've been reading lots of the information and lots of the data that's been sent in the last discussion around the issue around the equity and what happens with teachers in classrooms. I don't see data, however, from Baltimore, which has been using the framework for approximately 13 years, I believe. I did not see data that showed that there was any skewing of the evaluations of Baltimore City teachers unless I missed it with the rubric. And in fact, the data that I do see around the evaluation of our teachers in comparison to Maryland is that our teachers are being rated very well and, as a result, as you say, with the tie to the salary, also being compensated very well. So I really, part of that one, I'm really having some trouble with saying in terms of, and most of our measures around the other portions of the evaluation look at growth, at the measure of growth in a school and not specific student by student. And so some of that, I really do need to see a little bit more for that particular argument, and that's just my own request. If you have that, it would be great to see.
We would love to see data on how teachers are broken down and treated along race or gender lines, and we would be very interested to see.
Well, we have data of how our teachers are, their evaluation rating, and what I'm saying to you is I don't see what you've been describing.
We would be interested in seeing that as well. We have not seen that data. And what, one concern that we have is, as this policy, if this policy were to go forward and who it would most affect, it would be these groups that we see being affected in other districts. In other districts, urban districts across the board, it's been shown that, again, teachers of color, teachers of students where there are high concentrations of poverty have lower ratings. It may be going on now. We haven't seen that data, but we're fearful with this push to lower evaluation scores. We've been hearing this coming a lot from principals at the start of this new school year, that they've been told to lower the evaluation scores of their teachers. That's something that we regularly hear as a union from our members.
Yes.
And it's something that principals have shared during their school PDs.
That is so different than we started. So that is a very new wrinkle that you're putting here in terms of no mandate, to our knowledge, that anybody is telling someone to lower evaluation scores. And in fact, if you look, again, if you look at our evaluation data, that is not happening in Baltimore City schools. Commissioner Frank, and then I think Commissioner McFadden.
Well, just a comment on that, Madam Chair, is that we're expressing that that is what our union members are coming to us and saying that their administrators and qualified observers are saying. So that is what our union members have informed us on, and that's why we are making that comment.
Chief Davis, is that something that has been?
I mean, I want to be super clear about this, right? Without a doubt, when I meet with principals, I take a look at staff information and I take a look at highly effective and effective ratings, absolutely. And when, I'll say 90% of the staff is rated highly effective and effective and 5% of the kids can read on grade level, I call that into question. I don't want to, like, sugarcoat that at all because it doesn't make sense. But at the same time, I will never, ever ask or never direct any employee to change a rating based on that. They have to use the rubric, they have to be honest, and they have to be ethical. I make sure that that is the message that we send while, at the same time, calling into question data around evaluations and how that relates to our students and how they are performing. So it's a conversation, and there's no doubt about that, but we will never, ever ask someone to lower a rating, never. And I need for that to be unequivocal and for everyone to understand that.
Commissioner Frank?
Yeah, thank you. I want to thank those of you that have sent me data to review. I review it as much as I can. I'm still curious about the correlation that you're making between one unscheduled observation and the data around, or what you've said with, in terms of male teachers, teachers of color, and teachers who are in disadvantaged schools. What's the link between one unscheduled evaluation and those facts that you put forward?
I would say a couple of things. One is that, again, our concern here is that it will misidentify teachers based on the characteristics outside of their control, and that this will be most likely to happen at schools that have these characteristics, either concentrations of poverty or the demographic characteristics we discussed.
Why? Why would it be most likely to happen in those circumstances versus two scheduled evaluations?
So at many of these schools, they often have chaotic or disorganized school administrations, and this often can lead to impacts on the actual experience of the teacher in the room. So, for example, when I was a starting career teacher, I had my classroom interrupted all the time. It was interrupted from parents coming to visit in the middle of class, it was interrupted from other students at nearby classrooms, it was interrupted when hall monitors weren't present as they were some days. So it was very erratic day to day. And day to day, with this push of unannounced formals, again, I think that there has been expressed to our members this pressure to lower ratings and that principals could take advantage of the unpredictable, chaotic nature of schools to say, okay, here's a moment where I can use this rubric effectively, I can say I'm sticking to this rubric, but I've recognized a situation where I can jump in and do an observation. I think that, again, this isn't something I'm saying would happen with every principal, but it's a concern that it would happen with some, and it's one of the things that we hear the most is with these sort of fear-based relationships that we first started sharing when we first made comments.
And if I could also comment on that, and also just going off of that, like, the idea of that we are still not in a place where every single school, or even majority of the schools, have the same formal observation environment. It's very different depending what school you are at, how the observation occurs, how long a qualified official, a qualified administrator will stay in the room, what happens when they're in the room. Some schools bring two people in, some schools bring one person in. Some teachers have five people in the classroom, some teachers might have 35. There's a huge range, and if you look at the instructional framework, as is, all of the things that need to be hit on that instructional framework needs to be carefully planned out. Some days, a Socratic seminar, you might not hit everything that you would normally hit. Like, yes, it might be a bomb lesson, but you're not going to hit everything that would be in that instructional framework. And if you're only going on that day as is, you would be seen as maybe ineffective in, so maybe you would get fours or threes in student-to-student conversation, but maybe that day you're not really doing as much focus on routines and procedures. And so really thinking about, like, when you have someone just popping into your classroom, what they see is what they see, and there's no context for that. And that's what's something that's lost with that unannounced formal observation. And also, sorry, one more thing to add, and then also thinking about the different dynamic of different schools in the city. There are schools that have a certain population of students that need themselves that preparation of. Other people who are not in this classroom typically are going to be in that. I want you to prepare for when there are new people into the classroom. How do I prepare my students to adjust to that mentally when people are coming into the classroom? I know when I have people from North Avenue or when I have people from other schools coming to my classroom, I get a heads up sometimes from the principal, and I'm like, hey, students, just so you know, you might see some new people in there. That's all I need to say, but they need that heads up, be like, Ms. Providence, why are all these people in here? What's going on? Is there something wrong? Like, even, like, giving that respect to students, to making sure that they know what situation is about to happen is really important, in my opinion.
With what you just said, and I'm going to be brief, I just want to say that I appreciate your effort, the effort that you all are putting into this particular policy. With what you just said, though, brings to mind the visit that my superintendent made today at my school. He came to visit me, came to visit us, and developing processes, routines, and procedures within my classroom allowed my students to remain engaged in the lesson. And my school has created a culture of reflection, observation, and feedback. So I understand your point in making sure that we do need to work on collaborating more and developing a culture of collaboration, and that is across the board, whether it is from us, you know, the board and our governing role, whether it's teachers, whether it's administrators, whether it's our related service providers, whether it's our students, whether it's our community members. We all need to just work, work at becoming more collaborative in our approach to improving outcomes for our children, because I think that is what we all want. To a particular fact, though, that you were discussing about the other jurisdictions within the state having some on-years and off-years, I'm curious, and I'm honestly asking, where the information came from? I know for us in my jurisdiction, it is, we do get observed every year, but the frequency of the observations is different. So I'm just curious to know.
Yeah. So we reached out to every LEA and asked them what their evaluation cycle was, and so we heard back from unions across the state that their evaluation cycles typically follow an on-year then to your, to off-year cycles. That's not that you don't get any evaluation every year, you are evaluated every year, but your observation only happens in that lead year. But it's important to note there's exceptions. One is non-tenured teachers, of course, they're observed every year, and other LEAs, it's common for them to be observed three or four times that year formally, and ineffective teachers.
Yes.
And ineffective teachers can be noted even in an off-year cycle. So if you have a feeling that this teacher is trending and effective, even if the year before they were rated effective, there's a date, you give them notice, and it becomes their on-year cycle.
Sure. I'm just saying that I'm observed every year. It just depends on whether my year is summative or formative and the frequency of how many times I'm observed. And I just want to make sure that we are being, all of us are being clear with all of the information that is being presented specifically in a day where alternative facts are often taken over a lot of what is true, and I'm not saying that you're not. I'm just saying that I think it is important to make sure that everything is clear, everything is factual information, especially when we are making decisions that are going to impact our young people. So that's all I wanted to contribute.
Thank you. I agree with that, and I think that we also need to make sure that we take in, like, the day in, the day out of the school building. Every day is not the same. Some days are different than others, and I think that needs to be taken into account also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't see any other of the recognized groups that have signed up at this point. So, okay. So we will move to the general public comment. I just wanted to make sure before I go to the sheet. Okay. So first we have Ms. Kim Truheart.
Y'all not going to like this. Three minutes is not enough. And if any school in Baltimore City has a percentage where at least 50% of the kids are not proficient in reading and math, then the teachers ought to be ready for unannounced, announce whatever friggin' kind of observation is necessary, be ready for it, because I'm coming. Because, no, that is not acceptable. You cannot sit in a school where kids are failing and not expect to get observed to improve your performance. That's what it's about. All right. August 31st, we had a silent disco at Rash Field. Dr. Santalisis, speaking of silent yoga, and the kids loved it. It was an amazing feat. Last Wednesday, the Board of Estimates down at City Hall approved a $16 million contractor redesign Rash Field, and I protested it. And I asked, how many young blacks did y'all talk to in this redesign of Rash Field? And they just stammered and nothing. So I met with the Waterfront Partnership Executive Director on Friday. She has now agreed that they ought to reach out to all members of this city. That is a family jewel, the harbor, and that we will include young voices in the programming that goes on at the new redesigned Rash Field. So I need your help in making sure we get kids together. She's going to put together some kind of advisory group, but this is phase one of the redesign, 16 million. Every time I think about it, $16 million, and they didn't get input from people who look like me. The alternative squeegee plan that the mayor announced, I'm thankful to say that one of the elements of that plan is a plan that I submitted, and we will get, hopefully, God willing, approval for the funding next week, next Wednesday, where we're going to take some squeegee kids and do some things. And I think I mentioned to this body that this came out of a protest I did on July the 10th where I found that the city had $49 million of current-year spending to do mowing and cutting and alley cleaning, and my city is filthy, okay? And I don't know where that money's going, but I'm thinking I can train some young people. And I don't know where that money's going, but I'm thinking I can train some young people, and they will have the skills and the ability to do that work and get some of that forty-nine million dollars. I need to know what the status is of the mandatory safety assessment. Think it had something to do with twenty nineteen September being done, finished, started, whatever.
The safety assessment.
Nobody knows.
You talking about the security review?
Yeah, school safety, wasn't that the name of the legislation?
Oh, okay.
Am I right?
Yeah, I believe that was turned into the state. I don't have the exact date as to when it was turned in, but it was completed and turned into the state.
Really? And I was promised, when I was in Annapolis fighting against it, that y'all would be inclusive, you would reach out to me and others to ensure that whatever that assessment included would include our voice. And you submitted something already?
So this is just this, there's a security review we had to do of our schools, and then there's the other work that I-
Something was due September, what? Do I need to go back?
I think that's the other piece of it, so let's follow up, because I think there's the other piece of it. I think the security view is not the piece you're talking about. There's also about ongoing work of security in schools, I think that you're-
Whatever was submitted, I'm requesting a copy.
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you, Ms. Truheart. Next, we have Joel Paly.
All right, here we go. Good evening, Chair, Chinean Commissioners. My name is Mr. Paly. I'm a proud first-year chemistry and physics teacher at Excel Academy, Francis M. Wood Alternative School. I probably should be lesson planning or grading right now. It's Tuesday, and I'm already trying to catch up on sleep, but I felt that it was important to share with the boards how new teachers like myself are feeling about the proposal to start unannounced formal observations of educators. Many of my fellow teachers are starting their careers at some of the most struggling schools in Baltimore. We're there because many of them need teachers desperately. The teacher shortage we're experiencing nationally and in our city is felt most acutely at the schools we teach at, and as a result, our kids have had no choice but to get used to the churn of adults into and out of their schools. None of Excel's science teachers have been there longer for two years. Just let that sink in. And while that's tough for first-year teachers like me, it's even harder for our kids. And I just want to address some of the comments that were being made earlier. Our schools are criminally underfunded, and our children have been robbed of the resources that they need. To say the reason that many children are performing below grade level is because of the poor quality of teachers in their classrooms is to discredit the work that we're doing, and it is not a license to try to humiliate us. Our students and new teachers deserve help and support, but the district has focused on unannounced formal observations rather than evidence-based policies that increase academic achievement, such as clear and thorough systems of feedback and instructional coaching. Baltimore educators are subject to more demanding and complex evaluations and get lower scores than peers. I can speak to this personally, this is not just a stat. I've talked to several of my co-fellow teachers at Excel, and when they've talked about coming from other schools to teach at Excel, they have said their observation scores have worsened. They've accepted that. We also know we are less resourced, we are facing more challenging classroom environments, yet graded on a rubric that fails to take into account special education needs, English learning accommodations, systemic underfunding, or alternative settings such as the one that exists at my school. We need coaching and support, not more tripwire that doesn't recognize our unique circumstances. Unannounced formal observations won't make me a better teacher at lesson planning, or at classroom management, or improve my students' attendance, but it will incentivize new teachers to leave the schools we love with either hopes of higher evaluation ratings, with either hopes of higher evaluation ratings and more resource schools, or leave the district entirely, as many new educators are doing. I want to be part of the, I want to be part of the solution. I don't want to be part of the churn that's setting my kids back. But this policy feels more interested in pushing me out. All teachers want feedback and want to grow, new teachers especially. Let's work together rather than against each other. I urge the board to implement my union's proposal to delay this vote and instead bring all stakeholders to the table to faithfully reevaluate how our observations and training for educators happen.
Mr. Paly, thank you.
I don't want to be among the next round of educators pushed out of Baltimore City.
Thank you. Gina Brightmeyer.
Good evening. My name is Gina Brightmeyer. I am a, I'm an eleventh-year teacher in Baltimore City, twenty-seven years teaching. I live in the city, my kids go to the city schools. I love this city. I believe there is a better evaluation process available to Baltimore City schools. I ask that you vote no on the current proposal of unannounced teacher evaluations. All parties must have a voice at the table, and the evaluation rubric must be approved before the process can begin. We are all familiar with the words of the popular Broadway hit from Rent. Five hundred twenty-five thousand, six hundred minutes. How do you measure a year? I am also sure we are aware of the definition of vocation, a strong feeling suitable for careers or occupations, one regarded as particularly worthy, and requiring dedication. Some synonyms for vocation are calling mission life's work. Approximately sixty-four thousand eight hundred minutes of a teacher's year is spent on this life's mission. They work approximately two, twenty thousand four hundred extra minutes to prepare for our children. The current proposal by BCPS is recommending that forty percent of teachers' evaluations come from one person's opinion of approximately a hundred and twenty of those sixty-four thousand eight hundred minutes. Is this the best way to measure a vocation? Furthermore, is this the best way to grow a pool of highly qualified, effective, fulfilled educational professionals? Again, I ask no. I implore you to postpone the implementation of unannounced evaluations until all parties, teachers included, can sit down at the table to build a rubric and agree on a process that measures and develops me and all teachers equitably. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brightmeyer. Our next is Bobby O'Brien.
Good evening. My name is Bobby O'Brien, and I am the Literacy Academic Planning Facilitator, English Department Chair and Site-Based Mentor for Patterson High School. I have been a high school teacher for sixteen years, ten of those in Baltimore City. I understand that we have big problems in our schools, like low student achievement. However, a policy of unannounced formal observations will not even begin to solve this problem. Surprise evaluations will not create effective teachers, they will create nervous teachers. I am asking the board to delay the vote on this policy for a year and create a workgroup with all stakeholders in order to develop a research-based policy that will help teachers become more effective and therefore increase student achievement. Increasing student achievement means increasing teacher effectiveness, which can only be done through true mentoring and consistent feedback. The Learning Institute published a research review that asked this question, does teaching experience increase teacher effectiveness? They found that, quote, "The benefits of teaching experience will be best realized when teachers are intensely mentored and rigorously evaluated prior to receiving tenure," end quote. The study goes on to say that, quote, "Policymakers should focus on program and investment strategies that build an experienced teaching workforce of high-quality individuals who are continually learning," end quote. The policy before you tonight is not among the list of strategies recommended to increase teacher effectiveness and student achievement. As mentioned in the quote above, intense mentoring creates high-quality teachers, which is currently not happening in the city. Patterson High is home to seventeen non-tenured teachers. According to the city's school guidance document, sorry, city school's guidance document, a mentor with only three to four non-tenured teachers must fulfill seven professional development or administrative items equal to approximately sixty hours of work. This does not include the ten responsibilities for mentors, including, quote, "consistent instructional support," end quote, through informal observations, feedback, lesson planning, and emotional support. As much as I truly want to intensely mentor my new teachers, is it humanly possible for me to mentor seventeen new teachers and implement a school-wide literacy plan and run an English department? No. Furthermore, many of my mentoring colleagues around the city are not full-release teachers, and they are expected to fulfill more than sixty hours of work and ten mentoring responsibilities for the new teachers in their building while teaching full-time. If we are serious about creating effective teachers and raising student achievement, implementing surprise observations is not the way to do that. Site-based mentors are not the only people responsible for developing new teachers. Principals and assistant principals should be the academic leaders in the building. If principals and APs want authentic and real-time data on teachers' instructional practice, they can conduct informal and low-stakes observations and provide teachers with feedback on what they see. Because a principal's time is a factor in doing this, moving to observation cycles with on and off years for experienced teachers will free up principals' time to provide the necessary feedback to early-career and struggling teachers. I am asking you to delay the vote on this policy for a year and use that year to develop an evaluation policy that is research-based, with on and off years for experienced teachers, and a focus on mentoring for early-career teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Arthi Samuel.
Hi there. My name is Arthi Samuel, and I'm about to begin my twenty-fourth year of teaching in Baltimore City. I'm an, I'm an itinerant teacher for the blind and visually impaired, certified in five areas, and at this point have taught and or assessed students aged birth to twenty-one in almost every setting in the city, including the homes of many of my students. For teachers like me who don't fit the box of the traditional classroom teacher, the instructional framework as it stands now is not an appropriate evaluation tool, especially when viewed in the context of an unannounced formal observation. Teachers like me include itinerant teachers. We don't have a classroom, a set school, or in many cases, a consistent place to work. Two years ago, I did my observation in a hallway. Another time, I used the parent resource room, on a goes, not complaining, just saying. Teachers who do home visits or see students in the hospital, this includes home and hospital, early learning, infant and toddler, teachers of the visually impaired, teachers of the hearing impaired. The observational portion of the instructional framework just doesn't fit such situations. Life skills, PAL, pride, CTE, teachers, resource, special teachers, specials, teachers, these are, there are days when lessons and responsibilities don't lend itself to all the Ts, and our responsibilities extend way beyond classroom activities, and our evaluations overall should reflect this. Over the years, I've learned how to make formal evaluations work, but the lessons look and feel contrived in order to meet the unreasonable rubric demands. To give a specific example of how it affects our students, many of our students, especially in some of the pride and PAL programs, have trouble, documented trouble with transitions and with new people coming into the classroom. When somebody, even a familiar person walks into the classroom, it completely distracts from the lesson. They need to be, they need to be warned ahead of time, as someone else previously said. We welcome unannounced informal observations if they are presented in a non-threatening manner with an evaluation tool that is relevant to our practice and conducive to our students' needs with immediate and constructive feedback that will help us hone our practice. These need to be done regularly, so the kids and the teachers are aware of people's, people in the room, and they need to be done with consistent feedback, and immediate feedback. Unannounced formal observations using a one-size-fits-all rubric will drive teachers out of the district to work with special populations of our students. These are critical need areas. It is not easy to staff these classrooms, and it is a nationwide shortage. Pennsylvania seems to have an answer. They adopted the Danielson Framework as well, but they addressed many of the concerns I just raised by developing multiple differentiated rubrics for teachers who serve in special roles and subjects. This is why it is so important to create a collaborative workgroup who can tackle these complicated issues while taking our students' needs into account and relying on the work of other districts who thoughtfully address teacher evaluations for all educators, not just the ELA math and math teachers and social studies and science teachers. I can't tell you how many teachers over the past couple of years in many of the schools I've gone to that I've had to convince to please stay because they are really invested in the long-term success of their students, and I want to see those teachers stay for the sake of our students. And by the way, my kids also graduated from city schools, both of them.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Connor O'Brien.
Good evening. My name is Connor O'Brien. I'm a teacher and department chair. In 2011, a former student of mine, Camira, who had failed several classes her sophomore year, spoke to freshman advisory groups during what should have been her senior year, and said, "I made choices a couple of years ago, and I don't get that time back, and now I have to transfer." The reality that students do not get time back is a continual and urgent stimulus we face together as a district to work towards getting policies right the first time. And fortunately, we have the ability to carefully craft plans that avoid compromising student success. I want to focus on our city schools' blueprint for success, both in why I believe it's an effective plan, and why the move toward unannounced formal observations, especially this year, compromises students' learning and the alignment with students coming first. The blueprint's three priority areas, as we saw in the video earlier, are student wholeness, literacy, and staff leadership. Student wholeness relies on school leadership, staff, and teachers meeting students' socio-emotional needs. This in turn requires great staff and teachers. I agree with the blueprint's language on how to develop and keep great teachers. Quote, "Districts work to develop leaders at all levels and ensure that collaboration, coaching, and mentoring are an essential part of the workday," end quote. And in order to do this, we must keep educators in our district, the topic of which others have spoken about. Moving this year to implement unannounced formal observations is not only a distraction to these quality priority areas for success, but flies in the face of best practices of organizational change. The very late introduction of this board proposal has created a situation with an enormity of issues that were not and have not been adequately planned for, and which cannot be mitigated by some of the important reactionary proposed modifications. To me, this is an equation that equals a large distraction from the work towards two areas of the blueprint most directly, student wholeness and staff leadership. I don't disagree that the district wants the best for students. I disagree with the notion that this proposal will help students. Changes need to be made to teacher observation practices in order to leverage collaboration, instructional coaching, and mentoring, the three key areas the blueprint identified. In the past four years as a department chair, I have conducted around one hundred seventy-five informal observations aligned to either all or specific portions of T1 through T6 of the instructional framework. I can attest to the teacher empowerment created from actionable, non-evaluative feedback, especially when a teacher is a partner in creating goals and observation-focused areas. A well-intentioned district-proposed fix to a district-identified problem that is misaligned with the blueprint is not the answer that will help our children. The blueprint, teachers, administrators, research, everyone, relays the importance of collaboration and instructional coaching. Let's create a good system of assessments for teaching to work in concert with assessment of teaching before shaking up the formal observation process. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Greg-
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman Chinia and members of the board. I'd like to start off by saying that I've appreciated being able to offer my input of the instructional framework at different times of its creation and its rewriting. Some of the best professional development I've received has been from examining the language deeply and receiving feedback based on that language. In 2009, 2010, I was selected to be a teacher leader, a citywide initiative. One of the tasks we were asked to do as teacher leaders was to provide an initial set of teacher feedback on the Danielson Framework before it was used as an instructional tool for teachers. We were told to be open-minded about the process. The framework was to be used as an instructional tool to develop teachers over time. We were excited to be part of the process. Back then, almost ten years ago, we were told that the framework was not intended to be used for a single lesson observation, but rather as an ongoing developmental tool that teachers could use over the course of many years of growth. Back then, we were told that there are items in the framework that would not be seen in every class, but rather be seen over the course of many observations. This past summer, I attended one of the feedback sessions for the redrafting of the instructional framework led by Ms. Colleen Reyes, and, who has been at work as a contractor with city schools with, over the, with the framework for the past few years. So ten years after I did this for the first time, I heard the same messages from Ms. Reyes. The framework, as it's designed originally and as the rewrite is being used in classrooms today, is not designed to be used as an evaluation tool for a single observation. Ms. Reyes noted that there were actions in the rubric that would not happen in your classroom every day. So teachers were told ten years ago that their framework was not designed to see all the behaviors in a single lesson, and that message was reinforced this past summer during the feedback sessions. If formal evaluations were to be unannounced, this would only worsen an already problematic I currently teach high school mathematics using the Rieker Math Curriculum that the city schools provide us to use. This curriculum has four very different lesson types, and some lessons lend themselves to more observable evidence in the instructional framework rubric than others. For instance, during a modeling lesson, I will have a better opportunity to make meaningful real-world connections than if we were in a problem set lesson. In a Socratic lesson, students would have a much easier time engaging in meaningful conversations. If formal evaluations were to be unannounced, there's a chance that this evidence would not be collected in certain areas of the instructional framework rubric, not because I'm not capable of doing them, or not because my students aren't capable of doing them, and not because I'm not doing them regularly, but because the lessons are not designed to encompass all teacher and student behaviors from the rubric in every single lesson. So as a teacher who values great feedback from my colleagues and supervisors, I'd love to see the framework used in a different way to evaluate teachers, especially now that unannounced formal observations are being discussed. A vote for, a vote for unannounced formalists will not ensure that our teachers are growing and our students are being taught in the best way every day. Thank you.
Thank you. You got out of order. The next group, Maryland Alliance, there's several names, so I'm not certain who's speaking. Will McKenna, Janice Linder, Thalser, I'm sorry, and Mackenzie Allen. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Will McKenna. I'm the executive director of Offy of Baltimore, and we operate Bella Edison School and Tunbridge Public Charter School, and I'm here this evening speaking on behalf of MAPS, and my fellow colleagues are here, and Jane in particular will comment as well. I wanted to thank, first of all, staff and board for the work that's been done with respect to the policy so far. I think there has been good work, particularly, as I understand it, around the grading policy and the collaborative efforts to get to a better place with the grading policy. I am particularly focused on a couple of different aspects, and I think in key aspects, and I'm speaking for the alliance and for the feedback that we've gotten, the, the policy still tilts towards the punitive. If I read the policy correctly, an operator has to successfully operate schools at a high level for fifteen years to be eligible for an extended renewal. On the other hand, the board clearly has many, many options available to express its discontent, including notices of concern, revocation, partial renewals, and conditional renewals. I would recommend, therefore, that there's a tone change in the very beginning of the document, and that the board add a second sentence to the purpose, that's the first part of it, which says that the policy also, in addition to what it says currently, aims to provide or set forth the conditions necessary for charters and the school system to establish a partnership to advance the joint mission of accelerating gains and academic achievement for all students in the Baltimore City Public School System. The last line actually comes from the policy it stated later on, and I think there should be places in the policy where that is actually outlined, what exactly does that partnership look like and sound like and feel like. I would strongly urge, or strongly recommend the board to consider giving an operator an extended renewal after the first successful renewal, or at the second one at a minimum. As it is, it's after fifteen years. Extended renewals have advantages. First of all, preparing and going through renewal takes an enormous amount of time. Doing this less often would, I must admit, be invigorating, especially for an operator that has multiple schools. So if you do renewals year after year after year, it just, it literally wears me, you, us, down. Second, having extending, an extended contract is very helpful on the business side of things, which is a very practical aspect of charter schools, especially for schools in private facilities. Generally speaking, the environment for charter schools in Baltimore City is considered very challenging by lenders, and having the board give extended contracts sooner would be perhaps the first indicator of a more friendly landscape for high-quality operators in a very long time. And I know this because I've been through refinancing in the last year and a half and going to lenders and talking about contract terms that are five years, and this, in our current environment, is just really, really challenging. As for switching gears here a little bit, there's a lot of distinction around the language related to contract terms, and it feels ultimately legalistic, punitive, and unnecessary in some cases. The board should simply say there are three-year, five-year, and eight-year renewal contracts, and then there's a non-renewal. And if the board has concerns about, around a renewal term of three years, then we're recommending use the contract. There are lots of remedies in the contract, or simply use another strategy which you have available to you, which is letters of written notice. But saying three-year, partial three-year, et cetera, is excessive, we think. Can I have thirty more seconds?
Okay. No, thank you. Again, I'm going to, because this is a second reader, and we can still take additional comments, I would suggest that you, if you have that in writing, or if you've already presented that, be certain that we get it to our board exec and we'll share it with, with staff as we continue in the process.
So there's, sorry, there's not a vote tonight, then?
This, this, when I read three, it's, it was, it came as a part of consent.
Okay.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry about that. Yes, you are right. So unless, when I go back, someone pulls it, it will, we'll see what happens. So we'll, we'll, I will say to board members, as you were listening to the comments, you let me know what you want to do when we finish public comment, okay? Sorry about that.
Yes. That's okay.
Thanks for alerting me.
All right.
I hope you understand what I just said, that, this is, yes, this comment is in reference to one of the items that you did not pull from the consent agenda, so I'm just alerting you to that, because when we finish the public comment, I go back to see if you want to pull anything else. And so this is in reference to item eight point zero six. Have I clarified that, or is it muddier? You got it?
No.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Colin, is it Torres? I'm sorry, Tosas. It is a Z. Sorry about that.
My name is Colin Tozer, and I'm a school psychologist with Baltimore City Public Schools. I've worked for city schools for eleven years. I'm here on behalf of Baltimore City Association of School Psychologists, or B-CASP. B-CASP is an independent organization that represents and advocates for interests of school psychologists, educators, students, and families within Baltimore City Public Schools. I am here today on behalf of B-CASP to speak about our concerns with the proposed policy, GCO-RD. B-CASP stands in solidarity with the teachers who have spoken previously about the misguided effort to implement unannounced formal observations, and I think they've done a good job. B-CASP would like to record two specific concerns with the policy. First is the negative impact this policy may have on the culture and climate of schools. School psychologists are called to assist with creating healthy learning environments for our children, but I've seen firsthand how disagreements over observation results can reduce teacher morale, lead to increased teacher absenteeism, and in turn hurt students' opportunities to receive a high-quality education. And I would like to add that I think one misuse of this observation system is enough to not pass it. I have seen it happen. Collectively, school psychologists witness the challenges many school communities face when oversight is provided without growth-oriented feedback. Supporting the academic, social, and emotional growth of students in a building with a negative school climate makes an already difficult task feel almost impossible. We have strong concerns that the policy will only exacerbate the existing issues with the evaluation system. We do not feel that the policy as currently proposed will bring clarity to a process that can feel overly punitive and prescriptive. Our second concern is the lack of evidence that unannounced observations has as an effective strategy for improving teacher practice. School psychologists support ongoing performance feedback with opportunities for improvement until a specific criteria is met. This type of supervision and evaluation is proven as an effective way to increase staff performance, and that, that's outside of education as well. B-CASP cannot support the unsystematic collection of limited data associated with the policy. School psychologists have an ethical, legal, and professional duty to follow best practices in regards to assessment and evaluation. That's where our expertise lies. This background in assessment and evaluation leaves us wary of the proposed changes and their ability to promote a fair and unbiased evaluation system. In sum, the inclusion of unannounced formal observations overshadows the efforts that the policy attempts to bring the real reform to the observation process. Changes to the requirements for pre-formal meetings and post-evaluation feedback on their own may provide teachers the actionable feedback they desire, but not when paired with unannounced formal observations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Erica Harwin.
My name is Erica. Hello, my name is Erica Harkum. I'm from Hilton Elementary.
Hello, my name is Shannon Bella. I'm also a parent from Hilton Elementary.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Gordon, and we are all parents representing Hilton Elementary School. We are here, first, we want to thank you all for providing the funding for Hilton Elementary to receive heating and air conditioning. We are here, we were at a meeting on September the nineteenth where we were able to discuss our concerns with Cindy Smith and Dave Morrison. We gave them questions that we wanted answered before they actually began the abatement process. So we're here now to voice those concerns. We ask that school be closed, the entire session that they're doing, the abatement, which would be from Friday, the twenty-seventh until Monday, which is the thirtieth. So they granted us fifty percent of that, which they're closing school on the Friday, but we want them to close school on that Monday as well, just to make sure that the students are safe from any asbestos that could still be in the air. And now I'll pass it over to Ms. Erica.
My concern, being a parent at Hilton, my child has epilepsy. She's on medication twice a day, and she's in the second grade. From my understanding, the parents were supposed to receive a letter of the asbestos that's in the window. I guess they call it caulking, but since it's been there since the school was built, it's now dust. So we haven't even gotten the levels of asbestos, and as a parent of a child who's treated by a neurologist and a geneticist and on medication, and we also have the PAL program and a life skills program in our school for the caulking around our windows to be dust and us not get any letter of the asbestos levels before, during the abatement, or after. We haven't received anything. That's also another request that we would like.
As Ms. Harkum said, again, that was promised to us during the meeting that it would be available to us before anything took place. We have not yet received that, and we're still asking that nothing moves forward until we receive those letters. A lot of our parents, including myself, we have children that suffer with upper respiratory issues, and I think that we should, we should be granted that, like, we deserve that much. We're not asking for a lot, and this, this stuff is fifty years old. It's, it's not in the same form that it once was. It is now dust.
Yes. Inside the towels, and like, they're saying, it was a letter, a letter sent out, actually, we have it, where they're stating that asbestos is not only in the caulking, but in like the flooring, the material. So, but if you ever walked through Hilton, you would know that, like, our windows aren't good, our floors aren't good, so are we walking on active asbestos and breathing it, and we don't know. So we're asking for your help and consideration with that.
Thank you all for coming. Would you do me a favor and just make sure that we have a copy?
Definitely.
Of all of your requests? You have it?
We have everything. Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. So if you could just make, sorry, I didn't mean to be informal and say awesome, but very good.
Thank you.
And if you could make sure we have it so we can go through?
Yes, ma'am.
Each of those requests and make sure, because we, we are, we've had a discussion, staff has brought it to my level, so I want you to know that. I have had conversations with them, and so we're trying to work through?
Mm-hmm.
Some of those requests, but I want to make sure we have the complete list?
Yes, ma'am.
So that we can do that, and particularly, we already had plans to do an asbestos level, a reading of asbestos levels on a regular basis, but we'll try to make sure we match that and the other components to the best of our ability with what you've submitted, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that, that ends our public comment, and so are there any additional items that board members would like to remove from the consent agenda?
I'd like to hear from staff.
Okay. So eight point zero six has been removed, and eight point zero seven, all right? So is there a motion then to accept, adopt the consent agenda? Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, goodness. Okay, so we're going to look at?
Eight oh one through eight oh five.
Items eight point zero one through eight point zero five, that's, that's what I need the motion for, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Richardson, is there a second? Commissioner Reed? All those in favor?
I'm Reed.
Chinia?
Baden-Brooks.
Berkeley.
Reed.
And that is seven, one, two absent. And let's see, and now a motion for the remaining items, which would be eight point zero eight, eight point zero nine. And let's see, and now a motion for the remaining items, which would be 8.08, 8.09, and those four procurement items that I read. 12.01, 12.02, 15.01, 15.02. Is there a motion?
Move for a second.
Thank you, Doc. Dr. Reed. Yeah. Commissioner Reed, is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Berkeley, all those in favor. Frank, Bondima, Chinya, McFadden, Brooks.
Berkeley.
Reed.
So we now have 8 and 1 absent. All righty. So now we're going to go back and have a presentation for, we'll start with 8.06, public charters, this is a second reader.
Commissioner, is Commissioner Richardson asking for full reading, or is she asking for?
No, I just have, I just want to, I want the staff to be able to respond to the questions from?
Okay, yeah, just questions, right?
Yeah.
Hi, Angela Alvarez, I'm the Executive Director of the Office of New Initiatives.
And I'm Trevor Roberts, I'm a specialist in the Office of New Initiatives.
Okay, I don't know if it's helpful just to go to, so in public comment, we heard concerns around language that's actually already in the policy, that describes the terms that the board uses in the renewal process. So full for a five-year term, partial for a three-year term, with language that's already embedded in the policy. Some schools, I think, just in, read that in a new way, and we, in looking at the policy when we opened it up, it's important that the board keeps those descriptors for when we go through an appeals process. One of the standards around appeals is whether or not you're being arbitrary in your decision-making, and so clearly articulating that there's a difference between a five-year and a three-year renewal is important for that process. So for those reasons, it's important to keep it. I hear the sensitivities that schools have, like, we, you know, often in renewal talk about that the continuation of a contract indicates faith, but it also indicates that there are challenges that we need to look at sooner, that schools need to work on, and that's how we balance that conversation. And so you need that, you need that language to protect your decision-making in this process. So that's why it's important to keep that terminology, and that's why the proposed eight-year term has the adjective extended as an extended renewal, so each of the different kinds of terms are articulated different, and there's a definition around the eight-year term. So the other feedback was around the eight-year term. Some operators expressed, you know, wanting the term to come sooner, come after an initial five-year contract term, or even after a second term, which would be 15 years. So that's the testimony that you heard tonight. So in terms of the terms, five years is pretty much the standard nationwide for charter schools when it comes to terms, so there's fewer districts that offer longer terms. DC does nearby, does offer late, longer terms, but we would be one of few places to offer longer terms. I think it makes sense in Baltimore, we've had operators who've been around for quite some time, and it provides stability, and so, you know, the concerns that we heard the operators express tonight, and we heard, you know, throughout our feedback sessions around, for operators that demonstrate a capacity, having the ability to have some space, have longer terms, I think makes sense. The concern is, there's a lot of changes that happen within a school, and so the longer you're delaying reviewing that, and these schools have a lot more autonomy than other schools, you know, that, there's a lot that can go on within a school that you have less visibility into, the longer that period of time happens. So we recommend keeping the eight-year term with the requirements that are articulated in the policy around the number of renewals, consecutive renewals you need to have to qualify for a term of that length. There was another?
The one that I paused on was, could there be confusion with the three-year conditional and the three-year renewal, and could there be some like stigma attached if you get a three-year renewal?
So no, so we took that, and so you'll see, so we revised it, so the language that describes the term, we took out reference to conditional in the language that described the terms, and we just defined clearly that, a standard that if the board is going to give a conditional renewal, which you do rarely, it's not a common thing that you do, and we think that that should continue to be a rare thing that the board does, but that if you do do that, that it should be in a three-year term. We've had a variety of terms with conditionals, and when it's shorter than three years, then you can only look at practice and not outcome data. And for charters, we should really be looking at outcome data in a renewal context. So the three-year term gives you the ability to look not just at practice, but at outcome data. If it's shorter than that, then you're just looking at practices, and so that's why we, and I think a lot of schools thought that made sense, that a conditional renewal should minimally be within a three-year term, and so that's what that clarifies, but we separated it. Before, in the original versions, it was mixed up with the terms, and I think a lot of people were reading that all partial, all three-year terms were conditional, so I think that led to some confusion. You know, and there are people who just don't want any conditional terms, so that is feedback that we heard as well. But I think it's an important tool that you use occasionally, and again, I think it should, I think it should, you know, be used occasionally, not as one of the regular standards, but when it's necessary. Oh, and the last comment was around, like, language around partnerships, so that was brand new, so we didn't get feedback around specifically, especially around the purpose statement, because we've added, we've embedded the equity policy within the, or statements around the equity policy within the purpose statement. So that was brand-new feedback tonight, and had like, a lot of sessions. I mean, to me, what this says is we need to do more relationship building with schools. I think part of it is how you're reading it, how you read things too, has to do with, deal with relation, not just with what the words say on the stage, but what you're bringing to the words that are on the paper. Because there's a lot, you know, not only are we extending contract terms for schools within this policy, we've added protections to schools in terms of honoring their process for how they handle parent complaints, which wasn't embedded in policy, it was something that we protected in practice, but it's important that it's in policy, so it exists beyond my tenure or my staff's tenure and trying to protect that process for schools. You know, the grading policy, again, we embedded that in here to have protections. Procurement waivers were things schools had to apply for in order to get, so we embedded that as automatic waivers. So there's a lot in here that I think is designed to really respect the autonomy of schools and really honor that within this policy, so.
Any other questions? Okay. Is there a motion to accept the policy from the second reader?
Commissioner Lin, second.
Commissioner Reed, all those in favor?
Richardson.
Chinya?
McFadden.
Berkeley.
Reed.
So that is nine, did I count that correctly? And one absent. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did count that correctly, right?
Yes.
Four of you, four of you and me, okay.
This is the former president.
The former? Oh golly, okay. So now we're going to look at policy GCO, employee evaluation, this is the third reader.
the Director of Employee Effectiveness out of the Office of Human Capital. I'm here for the third reader of the proposed policy GCO. With me today are Jeremy Grant Skinner, our Chief Human Capital Officer, and also Mr. Jerome Jones, our Director of Labor Relations. I will jump in, and I first want to just lead with a thank you to everybody who is here, who have shared very personal, professional experiences. I want to thank everyone who's taken the time to join us today and in earlier reads here with the board and discussions, including during feedback sessions, and, you know, all along the way, pardon me, taking the time to share their concern, their experience, to help inform our work around the proposed policy. One thing I just want to name and reiterate is that while GCO-RD, the regulation focused on formal observations of teacher-level, certificated employees, is the regulation which has garnered the most discussion, and very important discussion, I want to name again and remind folks that it is within the larger context of a policy and accompanying regulations that are for all employee evaluations. It is critical for the board, and in line with the board's responsibilities and powers as outlined in state law, and also Policy BBA, that we need to have in place clarity around the expectations for evaluation of certificated and non-certificated employees. The other thing I would just name is that this is about broader clarity and expectations. As a district, we need to have a policy about such personnel matters, and to make sure that they are clear and transparent for all of our employees. It reflects our fundamental understanding that every employee across every role impacts the success of our students. This may be through the direct delivery of instruction, school leadership, shaping curriculum, and professional development, can also be through ensuring safe and efficient travel to schools, and creating welcoming environments for our children where they are seen and valued. I want to pause for a moment just to make it connect, and I will not do it justice, but Dr. Durant, when she has spoken with us about the equity policy, and I heard it raised today, something that struck me is that she reminds us we are the work. The district is not a separate entity from the people who work across all the varying roles. We are that work to make sure our children get the learning and the experience that they deserve in order to be successful. Employee evaluations are one way in which to ensure people across all roles have support and feedback in order to reflect and grow, to make sure our children get the education that they deserve. It is not the only way that we ensure this, but it is one way. On the slide, and just, it's helpful to see and to name, this is an example of distribution of evaluation ratings from last year, they are for our principals, our teachers, and local 44 employees. One thing I want to acknowledge is that some folks have suggested that our interest is in getting to some particular distribution of ratings. We don't have an ideal idea of what the distribution of evaluation ratings should be. And in fact, if we did have such an idea, there are other approaches that we could pursue, including, for example, Prince George's County, where they use Z-scores and they actually set thresholds for a particular percentage of employees who'd get a particular rating. We've not done that, we have created an evaluation with score ranges and cut scores in agreement with the BTU, so that as folks are getting feedback and there's performance data across various components, they're compiled together. I bring this today to show you and acknowledge the complication and the challenge that we have looking at district data. When I think about performance, how do we support employee groups or discuss performance when we have such different language, expectations, and even a different number of ratings? I chose these three groups deliberately. Our teachers and principals have more similar evaluation structures, they have the four evaluation ratings of highly effective, effective, developing, and ineffective. Our local 44 employees are an example of folks who have a three-tier rating system. And here we are trying to understand and support for their performance, but we're using different language. Proposed GCO-RA, which is the Regulation on Annual Evaluations, will define highly effective, effective, developing, and ineffective, and name what this looks like to have performance at these levels for the first time. That kind of clarity is critical where those evaluation ratings exist.
We see fair, meaningful, and accurate teacher evaluations as just one component of many strategies that can increase student learning. There is some language here that comes directly from our blueprint that talks about the connection between staff getting professional learning opportunities in their day-to-day work that helps them be a part of a high-performing learning community that then translates to better outcomes for students. We've been asked along the way for research, and there's clearly research that talks about the importance of the teacher impact on student outcomes. I will say, and have shared with some who spoke here tonight, there is not research that we have seen that says specifically, an unannounced formal observation is better than an announced formal observation, or an announced formal observation is better than an unannounced formal observation, and no one has provided research to us that talks about that either. The purpose for us to include a proposal for unannounced formal observations is, all stakeholder groups, as I shared here before, including teachers, shared that formal observations, when they are always announced, do not reflect, the results of those do not reflect everyday conditions and everyday instruction, and we believe that the incorporation of unannounced formal observations ensures that teachers get feedback that is aligned with the actual everyday conditions and everyday instruction. With respect to research, Dr. Santelisus shared at the end of last meeting, and interests in also looking at research from districts that have shown a trajectory of improvement over years in terms of student learning, and there are a couple of those examples in the country, places like DC and Chicago that have some of their best results over the last few years, sustained, have evaluation systems that are very much aligned with what we are proposing here. And knowing, again, that this is just one piece of an approach, I think it's important to the point earlier about alternative facts, or some facts that are provided but not others. The district actually is investing in professional learning, so someone earlier said the district has not invested in coaching, has not invested in professional learning. The district has invested $5 million in literacy coaches in the last two years. We doubled the number of achievement units that teacher mentors can earn for serving in that purpose in collaboration with the BTU. We have 80 more assistant principals and educational associates in our schools today than we had two years ago, and those are staff in schools that are often providing coaching to teachers. So I just want to say, in the context of this slide, we actually are committed to professional learning, our blueprint says it, our data show that, when you look at where we are investing, and we believe that an evaluation system that is fair, meaningful, and accurate is a part of that group of things that our teachers need.
On the slide is an example of a school-level report for first formal observation data from last year. We have heard in board meetings a concern that if everyone is rated the same, it doesn't always help us to act. When we are looking at the indicator-level data, this is even more true. If everyone's performance looks the same, we don't know how to act at a school level in order to develop folks, or to identify those folks, that we would leverage their capacity and leadership in order to help build others. This lack of differentiation also means that the information garnered from an announced formal observation, which is the context of this data, would not be available to help teachers know as well where to improve and where to set their professional growth goals. I'm not saying it's not happening, it's just people have to look outside of the data encompassed within a formal observation in order to make that type of determination. As we look at this example, I would remind us, so the dark green is highly effective, the light green is effective, the yellow is developing, and the red is ineffective. Effective means someone is performing well and doing a good job in a hard job. This is an example where if I were to look at this, and the yellow kind of row at the bottom, 7.1%, for those of folks who can't see it, 7.1% represents one teacher. So there's a potential, if we were to talk about, how do we invest? How do we support the school and the school team? We might say there's actually only one person on the team who needs support and development. And again, it comes down to barriers of the data. I'm not saying folks aren't supporting that their teachers are not understanding and discussing how to leverage their leadership capacity or how to support and develop them, but it all needs to happen outside of the data collected within an announced formal observation. In circumstances where? Somebody's daily practice, whether announced or unannounced, looks the same, then the data, we can believe in that validity and the reliability a little bit more, and that's wonderful. We're just saying that if the data would look a little bit different for some of our teachers by having an announced observation versus an unannounced, at least some of the time, that should be data. time, that should be data that's included in the evaluation and should be data that's available for making support and development decisions.
And I've been here since the implementation of both the new contract that we're working under and the instructional framework. And this is up here because there've been discussions about pay and how this, the implementation of this could impact pay. Well, if you look at this chart, you'll see where Baltimore City was in 1011 as far as entry-level salaries, we were close to the bottom. And then you look at, as over the years, how we have inched up. And then now in the 15th, in the fifth year of the contract in 1819, the salary in Baltimore City is towards the median salary is at the top of the schools that are listed up here. So teachers, our, our, our contract as well as the instructional framework, which based on the contract, evaluation is the number one reason that teachers move, gain AUs and are allowed to move through the salary scale. And through the entirety of this period, the instructional framework that we currently have is what has been used to evaluate the professional practice of teachers. And teachers have been able to gain AUs and move using evaluation, utilizing the instructional framework over this period. The current contract had a part of the contract, which in March 2019, we had to reevaluate and whether the contract was working. And, and looking at that, the data available, we said it was, and part of that was that both sides commit to continuing improvement, looking at our practices to improve practice for teachers, and we believe that this is a part of that continued improvement.
The study that Jerome referred to, looking at the progress of this over the, over a number of years, happened in a joint committee where the BTU and the district formally collaborate on the implementation of the pay and career pathway system that we put in place. And we together said just earlier this year that this demonstrates something positive about the way that we are supporting teachers and their professional growth. That is an example of ongoing collaboration. I just want to take a moment. There are a couple of slides in here just sort of going back through different types of engagement that we've had going back to March. And we've had the opportunity, given feedback that we've heard at policy committee and at board meetings, to incorporate different kinds of opportunities for people to engage. So whether that was Facebook and Twitter or in-person sessions, or then leading into August, the, a session that included board members and, and representatives from various, various employee groups. I, I'd actually want to just refer to something BTU representatives said earlier about Regulation RA. So Regulation RA is a component of our proposal that would allow the district to move away from annual evaluations for every single employee. And that's, that was presented tonight as something where it, it's not clear enough what that would look like. It's not, it's not outlined exactly what that would look like because we need to engage on that, because it has implications for what is in our contract with the BTU. It has implications for people, some people who have a perspective that that could mean that they don't get as much feedback when they want feedback, even though they are performing at a really high level. So I would just say, in terms of engagement, we also, we also can't have it both ways. So we have created a lot of opportunities for engagement. We are committed to more engagement. And when we look at some elements of the policy that are not fully fleshed out, it is because we know it is important for us to do that. This shows the, what I would say is the outcome of some of that engagement. So at the Board Policy Committee was in May, and at that time, the, the initial draft proposal shared said that beginning this year, beginning next month, in fact, all formal observations would be unannounced, except for, for the first, first observation of the year for people who are brand-new teachers. And the Individual Development Plan Conference and the mid-year conferences would be the places that evaluators would talk with teachers about what they would expect over the next, over the next period of time before they, before they engage in those observations. First reader in July shows by that time, we had built in a transition period where the first observation for the next two years would be announced, retaining one unannounced during those two years. And then also, that's the time that we incorporated a, a part of the policy that said that formative feedback based on an informal observation would have to be provided before an unannounced formal observation could be conducted. And then a second reader in August, that included making permanent the first formal observation, rather than it just being a two-year period when the first formal observation would be announced. And then we included a couple of other things, a guideline saying that a teacher could request at the time an unannounced observation is about to happen, that it be rescheduled. And new language indicating that beyond the one informal observation that would be required, informal observations more, more generally were encouraged. There's also language about ensuring that there's not, an unannounced observation doesn't happen after a significant disruption, ensuring that it happens when the evaluator should have a reasonable expectation that he, he or she would see evidence of, of the indicators in the instructional framework. So this just shows sort of the trajectory over time since May, when some members of the Board first heard about this policy in the Policy Committee. So this shows the change since second reader in August. So the, the change here is to delay implementation of unannounced formal observations until the 2020, 2021 school year. So this would mean that this year, both formal observations continue to be announced, and then that next year, the second formal observation would be unannounced. So we're talking about the spring of 2021 would be the first time that teachers would experience an unannounced formal observation.
Yep, sorry about that. As I mentioned before, we do not believe evaluations alone improve student learning outcomes. We also want to, we've never said that, nor is that what we believe. We do believe that educators receiving more meaningful feedback aligned to their daily practice can help and is a part of our work to impact and improve student success. I want to name that some of the things that have been brought out today with the folks who have joined us and people along the way who have shared feedback, some of our best way to address their concerns is through the work that's outlined related to our instructional framework and our investment and our expansion of training and resources for qualified observers and school teams around observations in the instructional framework rubric. We consider research about how to make a trustworthy observation. You see listed here, and this in particular, comes from the Measures of Effective Teaching Project or the MET Project, where they outline trustworthy observations are consistent, unbiased, authentic, reasonable and beneficial. And that, I feel, does reflect the feedback that we've heard from teachers and school leaders around the opportunity of observations. It does not say whether they are announced or unannounced. It is about the training. It's about ensuring that the rubric is manageable and it feels aligned to the expectations of folks' role. Has to be clear that we solicit feedback along the way to make sure that we're refining language and the company resources. We have to make sure that there is strong observer training where there's pre-scoring videos. We explain the rubric to our observers as well as giving them opportunities to practice, applying the rubric and seeing how well-calibrated they are with district expectations. It also includes a call-out, and this comes from the MET Project, and it's one that we hear today and one that we have to make sure is incorporated in our training and support, the concern around bias. Now bias can be positive or negative. The concept is that there is something that is not about the rubric and it's not about necessarily the delivery of instruction that's influencing the rating. It could be that I have a preference for loud, jumbled-up, kids running around, talking to each other types of classrooms. I might not focus quite as much or realize that maybe the level of rigor of the activity wasn't what children needed for that grade level and the content. That preference may influence my rating. We have to make sure that we're training our observers, we're talking about this. We've heard from teachers, I think it makes complete sense and we'll work toward this as well, to make sure that there's training available, they have insight into how we're training and talking about expectations with observers. The intent is not that there are surprises about expectation, and so we are more than happy to share that. We hope that is useful for folks' development. But I just want to go back and reiterate that what we see in research is not that announced or unannounced is changing how trustworthy the observations are or how meaningful the feedback. It really is a lot of the work around training and ensuring that the company resources and rubric are strong. Something I want to name on this slide is you see an outline of work. In particular, this focuses on the last school year, 2018-19. I will name, I've worked on employee evaluations for Baltimore City Schools for about seven years with varying roles. In 2016 and 17, we were doing a lot of focus groups. So there is other input along the way we've heard from teachers and school leaders that has influenced our work. But I wanted to call out in school year 1819, what we did together to gather feedback around the instructional framework rubric. Now I would name, this is a work stream that you see in parallel with our policy development process. We have rubrics and forms for all of our employee groups. They vary based on union affiliation and sometimes job title. You do not see any of these rubrics in the policy or the regulation. The policy and the regulation set direction for the work. They're not including the rubrics there necessarily, but it's really critical to us that we talk about this work. You'll see that we adjusted through our proposed GCO-RD, the timeline of unannounced formal observations to more align with this training and this work around the rubric based on feedback that we've heard. I would also name that in GCO-RA, Guideline 7, we name that each employee will be evaluated based on the written criteria and the rubrics and forms associated with their job title. In the policy itself, for Policy Standard G, we say that to strengthen the quality of the feedback and support employee receives, the written criteria and components that are part of the employee's evaluation must align with the employee's job title and function, but we don't include the rubrics themselves. I would lift up an example with our principal evaluations, where in 2017, MSDE adopted the Professional Standards for Educational Leadership, or the PSEL standards, to be the standards that all LEAs had to align their principal evaluations to. That shift was from the ISLECK standards to the PSEL standards. That work involved us then going back with our union partners, school leader and district partners to revise and update our leadership framework rubric. That ability to be mobile and adapt to changes in evidence-based research and expectations from the state are key. And one of the reasons why, again, you don't see our rubrics and forms necessarily here, but the policy and the regulation name that they should be aligned to job title and function to make sure there's quality feedback. It's a lot, it's a lot of text. What we've elevated here are our proposed updates to the instructional framework rubric. I want to name again that the alignment of the shift allows us to make sure that based on feedback, we're using this foundation here for training, support to gather additional feedback from teachers and school leaders and content folks around the updates in the language this year to help really strengthen that. Something I'm really excited about is the opportunity to work with folks in more of our specialized content areas to make sure some of the look-for's and accompanying resources really address some of the feedback we heard today and along the way around making sure it feels applicable to various classroom settings. That helps to increase the meaningfulness of the feedback, and we have a shared interest in that work together. What I would name here is that folks have said, "There's no way to hit all of the Ts unless there is an announced formal observation." I, I push back on that. I think that inherent in that and implied is, is hitting all of the Ts at a highly effective level is the end of that sentence. And, and what I would name is that the things listed here, which include making sure there's clear, standards-based learning, making sure that there is opportunities for students to engage in rigorous work, talking about using questioning and progress monitoring techniques, giving feedback to our children and creating opportunities for them to interact with one another, those are all things that we would expect to see on a typical day of instruction. Now we have named in our regulation, based on specific feedback from folks, that there could be some outlier lessons that would not necessarily be conducive for an unannounced formal observation. Our shared intent is that any data in an evaluation is aligned to someone's practice. It then can inform meaningful feedback. So we share that interest. It's why we updated, it's now Guideline 9 in GCO-RD, but we outline and name that this should be an opportunity to observe regular practice. To reiterate what Jeremy shared, it's where we talked about they should not happen after unexpected significant disruption. They should occur when you would reasonably expect to see the indicators of the, of the instructional framework rubric. And so I think about examples of Socratic seminar or assessment days or lab days, and those would not be days for an announced formal observation. And we name that here. We've outlined how we would update our guidance. And I want to thank folks for the examples they gave us to make that a really rich document. We can't water down the expectations of what good teaching behaviors look like for our kids to try to make something a little bit more accessible. We have to make sure that what is there is what is appropriate to make sure our children have the teacher moves and the facilitation of learning that are going to help them learn and be successful.
And one, one of the things we want to call out here is that we believe that this is good instructional practice that kids deserve every day. And what we, what we want to call out here is that when we talk about unannounced formal observations, we are talking about after there's been an announced formal observation, after it's been informal feedback to teachers, and that we are actually talking about those unannounced formal observations occurring in January, February, March and April. That is when they would occur, and that what we are saying in this policy is that an administrator should be able to walk in any classroom and see these practices going on, and that a teacher would have accountability for implementing and carrying out these practices for the students of Baltimore City. Now what that looks like in terms of the evaluation is that unannounced formal observation would be 20% of the overall evaluation score. It is not the majority of the score, it is 20% of the evaluation score. And by an administrator being able to walk in a classroom, they actually see what goes on each and every day, and with that information can provide feedback to the teacher to improve practice, which many teachers have come before you and said that that feedback is critical to improving. If you believe that feedback is critical to improving as a professional, how can you then turn around and say, "You cannot hold me accountable for implementing those practices?"
So our final slide shows with our proposal tonight, what formal observations would look like and side by, or along with the instructional framework rubric implementation over the next couple of years. So what you can see is that the, the proposal now is that in the, the current school year, all formal observations would continue to be announced and teacher formal observations would continue with the current rubric, which we've shared before was the plan. And then next year, in the 2020, 2021 school year, the first formal observation would be announced, the second formal observation in the spring would be unannounced, and the updated rubric would be used for those formal observations next year. So the final thing I want to share is just a bit in about comments earlier about equity, and just want to share three things. So first, we of course care about whether our, whether any policy we have would cause great teachers to leave our schools where they are needed the most. I will say, in our, in our current system, there is not evidence that teachers are leaving certain schools to go to others because of evaluations. The, the second thing I'll share is this policy actually includes a compliance requirement where we would provide an annual report to the Board on employee evaluations. It says this report will include annual evaluation trend data, including evaluation rating distributions by employee group and disaggregated by demographic and geographic characteristics. This is a statement in the policy where the Board would direct us to provide this data on an annual basis. And when I heard earlier that we're not implementing the equity policy, we are implementing the equity policy. You see something like that in the policy. I served on the Strategic Equity Task Force that helped develop that. It is important to me personally, it's important to the whole district, that we are implementing the equity policy. And I will close by saying, some of the language in the equity policy was shared earlier. I'm going to read the beginning of it, which the purpose says, "Baltimore City Public Schools acknowledges the historical, generational and compounding reality of the system structures and practices that have intentionally created and continue to afford advantages to some groups while perpetuating racial inequities for others," and goes on to say, "We own the responsibility to create and implement policies and practices that result," or, sorry, "we own our role in overcoming things that lead to predictably lower academic and graduation outcomes for students of color than others. This policy..." This policy is an attempt to do exactly that, to make sure that all of our teachers are getting the feedback they need every day." That includes the teachers who are entry-level or most struggling, all the way up to our very best teacher in the whole district. They need and deserve feedback every single day that is based on the practice they see so that our students get what they need in order to meet academic goals and graduate and be ready for careers and, and life."
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna, I've got Commissioner McFadden, and then Commissioner Lynn, Commissioner Frank. I'm trying to keep track of the order here, okay. And Commissioner Brooks, okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you all. I want to preface my statement by saying, as someone who has taught in the second most persistently dangerous school in the state, and someone that still teaches in an extremely diverse school, I think that it is important that each and every day that I bring my A-game and that teachers and everyone that services young people do the same thing for their sake. And with that, I want to reference something that you said in regards to professional development, and how, why I applaud the efforts that the district is doing to make sure that we have increased literacy coaches, and we're increasing our efforts to make sure that folks are developed so that they do have the tools to support the needs of all of our young people. I think that there's also work to be done in that regard. I think that although we are building, you know, we're buil- building on that, I think that we still have work to be done, practi- practical work. When I think of trauma-informed and responsive instruction, I think that that is important. I think that that is something that we've got to focus on in addition to the literacy coaches, and I know that there are plans to move that forward. With that said, I think that, can you go to slide 12? With that said, I also think that there has to be development and coaching around the rubrics and the tools that are being used. And this right here, this slide, I think would be more meaningful, this process to happen prior to us having to approve a policy that would, that should be a byproduct, that should be a byproduct of this process. So yes, we are making strides in professional development, but I think that we also, as we want to be responsive to young people, I think that we have to be responsive to the needs and the voices of all of our stakeholders, especially when we are making decisions that are impacting generations of people. We're looking at our future, and it's important that we're taking the time to make sure that we're doing what is best for the young people, but also making sure that the conditions of folks that are working for young people and serving young people, that we're just being more collaborative in the approach to developing a process that works and benefits and coaches and supports all of us.
Commissioner Lynn?
Good evening. Can you go to slide 13, please? I have two questions for this one. One, when I look at this, if I'm in my social anthropology class and I look at this rubric, and let's say, for example, today, all we did was talk, you know? We talked about society, we talked about things. But when I look at this, and I look at my classroom setting that I had today, my teacher wouldn't really score very well on this. So how are we saying that, and, and I'm saying this in a sense of, if a teacher comes in, I mean, if a principal comes in and regards this, and you know, they have, you know, you didn't do this, she didn't, that doesn't mean that I'm, I'm a bad teacher. That doesn't mean that I'm a bad, you know, I don't know how to do my job. It just says that one day, I want to make sure that, you know, my students actually know what they're learning, and they actually get a chance to actually digest everything that they're learning. I don't think that this shows that you're giving teachers the opportunity to actually go and help students digest what they're learning, because it's a lot. It's a lot of things that we're learning. But so on. My second question is that, from this, from the Teach Seven to the Teach Nine, are the two teachers that have been cut out, are they incorporated into the other seven, or are they just gone entirely?
Thank you very much for your question, and for your connection to today and your experience. One thing I wanted to name, and I, and I wasn't in your class, there's a lot that I don't have insight into. One thing I do want to lift up, because I think it's really important what you shared, we also, when we think about how an overall valuation rating, like, one thing I also want to name, even in how we define developing or ineffective in GCO-RA, nowhere are we saying that someone is not good at their job. We're talking about room for growth and progress and impact, but I also appreciate you lifting that up, because people feel that so intensely. I would also say that when we consider how an annual valuation rating is
So how, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
But I really want an answer to the question.
Yeah.
If, if, if I'm in a social anthropology class, and I'm talking, that's a part of the class itself.
Yep.
How would I not score well?
Commissioner, let's get an answer, if we can, get the full answer, then we'll
Yeah. I mean, one thing to say, and I apologize if this doesn't feel like it's answering your question, my intent is just to name that to not score well, folks need a 70 overall to be effective, 86 to be highly effective. We're not actually asking for hundreds. I also, I don't know, when you mentioned that students were engaged, they were it's a total score of 70. The other thing to your point about what happened to some of the Ts, where we've moved from like a nine teach key actions to seven. Our current instructional framework rubric 2.0, Teach One, I have it here, but it names that it's an objective-driven lesson. So there's an entire T focused on, is there objective, is there purpose, is it clear the teacher and to the students what they're doing? After discussion with Sheila and thinking about our connection to the blueprint, to give an entire teach key action to, to having a purpose-driven lesson, didn't feel like it informed development or an arc of feedback. So you'll see it incorporated in our new Teach One. Not all of the indicators, but part of it. The other one that you don't see quite as clearly distilled anymore is our current Teach Eight. And again, I would just say that that was something around, like, it focuses on systems, and you see some of those embedded across the other Ts, because there should be systems that are helping to support things like questioning techniques and progress monitoring and student interaction.
Can we just go, just, I don't want to go too deep into this, but if you're, if you were in your anthropology class today, which is an IB anthropology class, then you should have had, you should have had presentation of standards-aligned information for students, that would be T1. You should have been actively engaged in rigor standards-aligned activities, because it's, again, it's an IB class. I'm guessing that the teacher probably asked you intentional questions to push your thinking around what you were talking about today. I'm guessing that the teacher probably used informal ways of assessing your level of understanding of the content of what she discussed today, and, you know, and other students in the classroom. I mean, I think sometimes words like assessment, we take as being really literal, like, did you fill out a piece of paper that, and I, that said, you know this, or you know that? And it doesn't have to be, it can be a conversation, whereas in the discussion with you, she's assessing the degree to which you understand the content you're discussing, and then pushing your thinking around it. So a lot of those things would happen in a discussion that you would see in a, in a classroom, in an IB anthropology class.
All right. My, no, I'm not. My next question is that, so I know we talked about the highly effective teachers, and how that has been sporadically throughout the entire district has been a thing. So what about the, the, the teachers that, you know, the data around teachers that have been laid off, or the data around teachers that have, you know, left the system? Because I really haven't seen a lot of that, and if you, you know, I want that to be taken into account when we do some of these, because if we're saying that all teachers are rated highly effective, and, you know, they're, they're great teachers, but some of them are laid off, and I know that this is 20%, but shouldn't that in a way still be incorporated into the data when we're really talking about this?
Yeah, I, one, one thing I would share is, we look every year at the number of highly effective teachers who we retain until the next year, because if we're looking at teacher retention, we want to retain teachers across the board. We want to especially make sure that we are retaining those teachers who are highly effective. And that number for five or six years straight has been 92 or 93% of highly effective teachers who return the next year. And so I would, I would, I, I think that part of what leads to that is what Jerome, Jerome shared, that we actually have put in place systems so that teachers who are staying here over time and contributing to student learning and advancing their own professional learning are able to access higher pay, are able to access different career opportunities. So I, I think these things are connected, especially as, as Jerome shared, the, the way that teachers can advance through that system of pay and career pathways is actually based on, mostly on evaluations.
Commissioner Frank?
Could you go to slide three, please? I don't understand this slide. I don't understand why it's a line graph, and it doesn't add up to 100. So can you explain the slide? Just, just take one year, school year 2018-19. What is it telling us?
Jesse can talk more. What I will share is there, yes, perhaps, perhaps the graph is misleading in one point, because the, the L44 evaluations don't have a four, a four-tier rating system, the way teacher and principal evaluations currently do. That's something that's in this policy, is, is a statement that, that, of what those four things should mean. So L44 right now has a three-tier evaluation system. So the purple line has, you see a dot for highly effective, a dot for effective, and then there's a dot for ineffective. So there's not, there, like, the developing percentage for the purple is actually zero.
Okay. So you would add highly effective of roughly 25% with 75%, and that, you, that's the roughly 95% of highly effective and effective? Is that right? Go ahead.
Yeah. So the, each line is a different employee group. So that's one thing, you would see the total for like the 100 as you follow the line. So the purple line is the one that Jeremy mentioned. And what you would see there, the exact percentages, and I apologize, I should have included them on there, it's 23% of our local 44 employees are rated above expectations, 76% meet expectations, and 1% below expectations. A couple of things that are interesting to us, we have similar percentages of folks who are in the lowest category rating across our different evaluation systems. It is challenging to talk about performance when we have different numbers of rating scales in different language. Another example I would just call out, if this is helpful to see, is the example of our, the green line, which would be our principal, school year 18-19 evaluations. And again, what you're doing is you're following the green line to total, and there you would see for our principals, 16% were highly effective, 46% effective, 38% developing. So that, we were just showing the differences.
Okay. So if you go to slide 11, and this is, I think, the point that I want to make, which is, I, I think sort of the conspicuous absence in this discussion, or at least the presence in, of this discussion, has been principals. We've heard from Mr. Giddings, but a lot of this discussion affects principals or the evaluator, and whoever else evaluates. And we haven't heard much from them. We heard from the union, but we haven't heard the effect of the change of this evaluation system on them and their ability to do informal and formal. We've heard over and over, we want them to do more informal observations with meaningful feedback, but we haven't heard anything from principals about whether they have the capacity to do that. And, and so when it comes to training, to me, it, it is all about training and expect, and not assuming, and I know that you don't, that our principals know how to evaluate. Many of them do. I know principals that are in classrooms every single day, and they help teachers in meaningful ways, and I know others that don't visit often. And so I think when we have something in here about observer training, I'd like to see not only some dollar numbers in our next budget, what is it going to take to evaluate, to, to train our evaluators, principals, system principals, whoever else? I think in the report, report to the board, we should also report on how principals are doing on this. There should be some way to measure how they're doing, not just the ratings and, and then the final thing is, I think principals should be evaluated on how they're doing. So those, I think it's important to trust to effectiveness, to getting the best possible evaluations that we can out of this. We can assume that our principals and evaluators know how to do this, and that they need the support to do it, and that they should be evaluated on the way they're doing it.
Yeah. Commissioner Frank, I would just respond to a couple of things that you shared, and thank you. So with respect to the budget, so we've, we've shared before that actually the board did approve a couple of procurement items in, I think in June or in May and June, that are about training. One is for a contract with Power School, where we're creating a platform of videos where there's more opportunity for principals to practice rating, and that's supporting our calibration and recalibration, that I think at last time, we showed a picture of what that would look like this year. And, and appreciate the, your, your statement about, you know, continued attention to making sure that the budget supports that ongoing. The principal evaluation includes a couple of things that I think relate to what you're asking about. So in terms of like how well they are doing, one of the core values or domains in the principal's evaluation is about how they develop and evaluate teachers. So that's one of the things that they are rated on for 40% of their evaluation, and they're the only group that has in their evaluation feedback from the people they supervise, because 10% of their evaluation is based on survey feedback from their teachers. Principal engagement, the third thing, I mean, I just, I, I think from my perspective, it is only fair to name that while they have engaged differently, principals have made clear to us through the, through, through the president of Pazza and individually, and in group sessions we've had, where they stand on this. They've engaged differently than what you see here, but they have engaged, and one of the things that came up in the last session is President Gidding shared the survey that they did. So they had 60% of all principals responded to the survey, and then more than 80% of them said they support a policy that includes unannounced formal observations. You put those two numbers together, it says, "We actively heard from half of all principals that they support this," which is very different from saying 99% of 10% of teachers said something. So principals have engaged, they've just engaged in a different way.
Yeah, I, I agree, and they have engaged through surveys. I'd like to see the survey and what they were asked, because I've talked to principals, and frankly, they really weren't keeping up.
Commissioner Frank, we did, we did get a copy of the actual survey with the, yes, we did. But we'll make certain that you get it.
I haven't seen it, I'm sorry.
We'll make certain that we share the copy.
And the last question is, are we doing this now for principals? Are we supporting their evaluate, their, are we training them now as evaluators?
Yeah, everyone who serves as a qualified observer goes through a training or certification process. The thing that is different in our plans for this year is that in the spring, all, all qualified observers will again be trained. So it isn't right now an annual process, and we're going back. So some people who became principals last year are not engaged in the, in the certification process as an observer right now. In the spring, everyone who's serving as a qualified observer will receive that.
Can we, I don't know, John, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I think it would be helpful to talk a little bit from the principal's perspective, because we have heard a lot from principals. Remember, there's 170 principals, not 9,000 principals, so it's a very different number. And they did show up to the session here, they showed up to the session that we had where board members were here. They had, we have heard a lot from them. So they have been very active. This is something they've consistently asked for, but I would defer to John to talk a little bit about why this is so important to principals.
I mean, they've said this, not just this year, they've said it in previous year, when there was no board policy, or there was nothing that was up. They've always said that the evaluation of an announced observation is not what we see every day in our classroom for kids. That's just the truth. That is the honest-to-God truth. What kids see every day is not what the announced observation shows, and it's about kids and what they get every day. They have said that to me last year, as I met with them, and there was no board policy. They're unequivocal about that as well. When Principal Dubai and Principal White sat there, they said that, and I, that is reflected, I mean, Jeremy said that it was over 80% of the respondents. I mean, I, I'll be honest with you, I have not heard anyone that said, oh, you know, I would go against this, Mr. Davis. And so, you know, if, if, if we did a survey and it was 80%, then I would go with with that. But even before there was a policy, I have to tell everyone that this is what principals have always said, that the announced observation is not what kids get every day. And we got to think about that for a second if you're being evaluated.
I, I want to clarify, from, I'm sorry, from my perspective, I don't have the benefit of having conversations with all of these principals. I haven't had a conversation with more than two. So the board has not been presented with everything that you have received in terms of the feedback that you've gotten from principals. We heard from Mr. Giddings, we got a survey. I am not being critical, I'm just saying it's a voice that we haven't heard in a public setting. That's all.
So they did come, board members, they came, they came, so principals came here, principals came to the special session that we had, so I'm just telling.
I was at that session, there were.
There were about five principals here, so that's a lot of principals. There are only a hundred and seventy, so five is a percentage of a hundred and seventy compared to how many people are in this room compared to nine thousand is a pretty good percentage. So it is actually a pretty high percentage, and they also participated, sixty percent responded to that survey. That's a high return rate for any survey, that's a very high return rate. So we did, so I'm just, I just want you to understand, we, we just, we don't want your decision to be based on information that's not accurate.
My decision isn't going to be based on that.
Okay, okay.
Clearly.
I'm, I'm disagree, I'm, I'm agreeing with you.
It's fine, you can disagree, but.
I'm not disagreeing, Commissioner, I'm just, I am just agreeing with you, but I also want to say again, principals were here for public comment twice here at, at, at public meetings. When we attended the forum, and there were four board members who attended that, at each of, at each of our small group settings, there were principals with us, so they were, they were also there. Principals have been included in the folks who have sent in written comments, and principals also, PZAZA has, has presented, and PZAZA has sent us the data from their survey. Those are just, I just want to give you the data and the facts of what, what has happened, that we have gotten that information.
And I'll just add too, some principals emailed the board too.
I'm sorry, I'm just.
Yeah, could I, I'm gonna allow Commissioner Brooks, if you have some questions?
Yeah, so I just, you know, have a couple of thoughts and reflections and a few questions. I probably won't do them all, just a few. Just one, I just want to caution us on the, the strategic misuse of equity. As someone who has done this work for a really long time, how we talk about it matters, and just because we add it to something doesn't mean that it's equitable. I just want to put that out there, just, just put it there. So with that being said, I'm interested in hearing a little bit about how this particular framework is going to account for the various contexts in which various types of teachers operate. So we heard that a lot tonight, we've heard that consistently throughout, we know we have different types of teachers doing different types of things. How does this sort of capture that? So this is, there's something that's always lost when you standardize something. And so, like, how do you begin to address those unique challenges?
Yeah. Jesse may have more to say. I will say, we heard an example from Ms. Samuel earlier about an example in Pennsylvania where there were additional materials for different subject, subject or content areas or grade levels. That's actually part of, part of the work that has been discussed as future work with, if I can get to the slide, with the group that, the group that is working on this. And it is, it, we have not understood to this point how the, how an unannounced observation versus, versus an announced observation, which is actually what is at issue here, is impacted by, by that.
The only thing I would add, and something I'm excited about, because it's something, again, I've heard over several years in feedback, is our opportunity to work with teachers, content lead school leaders, to have more content-specific look fours. So that's something that we have committed to, we have our working group with BTU representatives there, that's something that we would work on together this year. I will name that it is a design choice that we haven't made potentially fifteen, sixteen different instructional framework rubrics. We think about consistency in training and norming. We are refining our instructional framework rubric, it has always been designed to elevate particular teaching decisions, but we are interested and will have now for the first time, and in response to feedback, those more specialized content look fours available to accompany the rubric. I think that's really critical work that we take on this year.
Great, thank you for that. Also, I'm interested in figuring out, given the, the role of the qualified observers, are they going to be content experts in the, the area in which they're evaluating? And then if so, how would a subject matter expert in like social anthropology have a stranger come in and sort of assess sort of the level of proficiency if it's not expressed in the content? How would they know that that's the thing that they're saying?
Yep. Thank you for that. And I would say that is in line with feedback we hear when folks are concerned, their, the qualified observer's background, potentially back when they had been teaching, may not have been in the same content area. I think about the training, I think about the look fours that would be available to support. We don't have right now where part of a requirement to be a qualified observer or principal would be content background and instructional background across every content area. I do think that there is some interest in how we could bring in other qualified observers and expand our training so that folks who are more steeped in that content, potentially the district level, may be able to support. But I mean, I do want to name that right now, the requirement to be a qualified observer is not that you have taught everything from every grade and every content area. We do want to make sure our training and these look for documents can help to support in those places.
Could I add that, I mean, and I guess I'm asking a question, but also from previous experience, at one time qualified observers included folks like department heads or, or the content specialists, so they're, qualified observers are not only school-based assigned people. So there, there is that opportunity, and as a principal, if there was a content area where you felt you needed an additional person, those people were also available to serve as, and in fact, a part of the, the policy indicates that there, there is a time when you may actually want to do that in terms of having a content expert come in as a qualified observer.
Great. And I just have one more question, and I don't know if I necessarily need to answer to it right now, but I'm thinking about how principals right now can go into any classroom and to provide feedback that matters. Why can't we not do what we're always ready doing to leverage that? Can we not sort of focus on the principals and extracting valuable informal feedback before we start something like this? I'm just.
I mean, I would just say, this policy again increases the, how often a principal is providing informal feedback because it is requiring an informal observation, whereas right now there's no policy that requires an informal observation. It also has a statement about the importance of ongoing informal feedback. And the fact is that we have an evaluation system that includes two formal observations, and it does not make sense to say that those two formal observations can't also be reflective of every, everyday practice. I would say our proposal tonight is a mix of those things, right? We're saying that one formal observation here and moving forward would continue to be announced even as we incorporate one unannounced observer.
I have a couple of comments, and then I, if I can, if you want to make comments. And I guess I'm, I'm gonna preface mine the way I heard someone earlier preface a comment. I too am of Baltimore, and I went to Baltimore City Public Schools, graduated from Baltimore City Public Schools, and worked in the school system from teacher to chief academic officer for thirty-eight years. And so in terms of observations and evaluations, I've been on both sides of that. What has disturbed me most about going through the three-way to process with this is, at least I, I'm gonna say I heard it more tonight than I've heard it. And, and, and it was actually a principal who, who first highlighted this when we were having some discussions. We have talked about all of the adults and the issue that all of the adults are having with us attempting to take a look at a process that need, at this point, needs to be looked at again, trying to listen to what everybody has asked for and build in an actual developmental period for this to happen. But all the adults are the ones who seem to be complaining, and I have heard very little about what any of this means for instruction in a classroom and improving our students. And we are only in, this is only September the twenty, whatever it is, and schools start at September second, third. This is very disturbing to me, and it's disturbing to me as, as, as a teacher, it's disturbing to me as a parent. When we talk about expectations, and there is some, some very good research that's been done about the power of the expectations that teachers have on how students do. Apparently, we don't seem to think that that's the same thing that will happen with us as adults. There is nothing on, if you're gonna put the slide up with the framework, there is nothing that I can see on that framework under the area of teach that is not good teaching. And so for us to argue over the rubric, and, and if I, I might not see this and I might not see that, if, if something from that doesn't happen every day that you go in front of, of students, then I'm not certain why we're coming to work. And I don't understand why as adults, and we've done this in Baltimore City Public Schools for as long as I know, we have been able to change and, and modify and make the kinds of adjustments we need to make in our practice and continue to work with children and not have to stop everything while we all feel comfortable before we get to do it. Every day and every moment that we waste with our children, they have lost. So while we spend a year figuring out that we all have to get together and develop an evaluation process, which by the way, everyone, there are people meeting right now about the Kerwin funding, and if in fact Baltimore City gets any of that funding, there's a large accountability piece that's attached to that. And just as we heard that MSDE changed some of those guidelines for principal evaluations, believe me, we're gonna have a statewide evaluation for teachers. So all of this may be for mute. But I, this is really amazing to me that we're still having this conversation. The plan that's been presented tonight, I cannot see a problem with. We will go back, we will look at the framework, we will look at the rubrics. We have always looked at different teachers who do different things and figure a way that we can look at them effectively and evaluate them. And for any of us that work with children with an IEP, a part of that evaluation and observation ought to be showing that we have actually implemented the IEP, not just special educators, all educators, and 504 plans. So I think with the year, with the proposal that's been made, to take a year to look at it, we will retrain, teachers will understand the framework, principals and, and qualified observers will get retrained. In the meantime, we'll continue as usual. I don't see why we would push off saying that next school year, we will begin to do something that might be more effective and help us to continue to improve with our children. And if you really are serious about saying you don't care if someone comes in your classroom, it shouldn't matter if that someone is the mayor of the city today, the CEO tomorrow, the speaker of the house who was walking around in schools on day five. It shouldn't matter. If you're really teaching, your children are attending to what you are doing. You turn around and say, there's some guests, and keep going. So I, this is really disturbing to me on, on many ways, and I've held it in a long time, but tonight I just had to say what, what I needed to say as the former teacher, principal, whatever it is that I am. So with that, I'm going to take a motion, if there are no other comments.
I move approval.
There's a motion to approve the policy. Is there a second? Commissioner Richardson, all in favor?
Frank?
Those opposed? I have six in favor, three again. Yes?
One absent.
One absent?
Yes.
So the policy is passed. Thank you. I'd like to give a notice for our upcoming meetings. The Teaching and Learning Committee will meet here on October, I'm sorry.
I am so, thank you, Christian, I shouldn't do that. We do have another presentation.
Let me get, I'll tell you about the meetings because people are leaving, they may want to hear, and then we'll go back. Teaching and Learning Committee will meet here on October the seventh. And we are changing, I, just letting people know, I'll, I'll give this to you before the end, that on our October meeting, we have changed to Monday, October the seventh, and this is so that we can be supportive of the observance of our religious holiday. So that meeting will be on Monday, October the seventh, here in the boardroom. Operations Committee will meet on October the fifteenth, the Policy Committee on October the fifteenth, one, both here in the boardroom, and the Parent Community Advisory Board, P-CAB will meet here on October the seventeenth. And now, I'm sorry, we'll go back to, I don't even know where I am.
Section nine.
Thank you. Say it.
I'm sorry. Section nine, policy BBBD, board member removal from office.
Thank you.
By our board exec, Christian.
Uh-oh, I'm in trouble.
Can see you later.
Take it out right now. They're gonna remove me. They're gonna remove me. Board member removal policy.
Good evening, everybody. Are you presenting on policy BBBD, board member removed from office? This is an update of an existing policy to align with amendments to state law. In two thousand seventeen, the governor's role was removed from appointments, and it's solely the mayor, so this policy update is to reflect that. Currently, in the policy and statute, there are five ways that a board member across the state of Maryland can be moved from office. That's for immorality, misconduct in office, incompetency, willful neglect of duty, or failure to attend at least half of scheduled board meetings in the calendar year. And per the policy and statute, elected members are removed by the Maryland State Board of Education, and appointed members are removed by the state superintendent, but on approval, approval and direction of the mayor of Baltimore. So in reflection, in response to some of the feedback from Policy Committee, there were a couple changes to the policy. One, I added definitions for the four justifications for removal from the board. But again, I just prefer you that those definitions are just kind of as an example in the policy for the board. However, the state board is free to go by its own definitions, but again, it's just mainly just as an example. So those aren't set in stone, but again, they're just in the policy per the, per the suggestions. And also added a, per again, feedback from the Policy Committee, adding the meeting threshold required for elected members. That's not in the statute, but again, as its own body, the board can set its own policy. So elected members are also subject to having to attend at least half of board meetings in this policy update. And just finally, a question that came for the whole board to consider, that came with my Policy Committee, do you think half of scheduled board meetings is appropriate? I would say most board members are probably typically, I'd say at least, attend at least seventy-five, so just a question for the full board, would you like to maybe consider increasing from half to seventy-five or two-thirds? Again, that's just for the full board to kind of give me direction on, and that was it.
Are we even making comments?
You certainly may.
Thank you. I think half is still a lot. You miss fifty percent of board meetings, then that's a problem. I don't think that, so you're saying that if you, it should be, if you miss seventy-five percent or something like that?
Oh, I'm not saying anything, I'm just throwing it out, it was a suggestion from Policy Committee.
Okay. I think that it should be less.
So you like to stick with half, which is, which is currently in the policy?
I can't.
You like to stick with half, which is what's currently in the policy?
No, I think it should be low, I think it should be, if they miss twenty-five percent of it.
Oh, well, we can't go lower than fifty, that's the state minimum.
Or is it state requirement?
Yes.
Because that's a whole lot of meetings for.
So we can't go lower than fifty, but we can go above fifty.
Okay.
I think you missed four board meetings, you don't.
For unexcused.
I, you know what, yes.
Yes, especially when important votes are being, being handled. I think we should, we may need to include something like that in the language.
Well, it sounds like you all like fifty.
Thank, yes.
So that was it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for being flexible. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Anyone opposed can turn off the lights tonight. Good night, thank you, everybody.